You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is June sixth, twenty twenty three meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access Laporte County dot org.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our June sixth meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. Do me a favor and silence all electronic devices and stand forward the pleasurable leashes of of the flag and the silent prayer. This is Nyla on the roll call, please.
Mr. Dabney, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Mack, Ms. Deitch. Present. Mr. Don Preswellski.
Present.
Mr. Paul Preswellski.
Present.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Ms. Jagus.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have eight present and two absent.
Seven. Seven present, two absent.
Oh, sorry. We're starting off not good.
So we do have a quorum. I did speak with Councilman Mack and Councilman Dabney, and they made me aware of their absences this evening, so. Prove loads of minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, a motion by Councilman Don Preswellinsky and second by Councilman Paul Preswellinsky. It's not one vote, please.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswellski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswellski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Reports of standing committees.
Yeah, Mr. President, uh, being a liaison to the Human Rights Commission. We had our monthly meeting today. He just want to report that the Pride Fest will be taking place, uh, June seventeenth at Fetter's Alley. June seventeenth will be the Pride Fest in Michigan City.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other reports of standing committees? Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Michigan City Finance Committee meeting met today, June sixth, twenty twenty three at five thirty one P M. There was a quorum. The Michigan City Riverboat and Boyd Development Claims Docket for June sixth, twenty twenty three. Riverboat Fund number two, two, three, five, twenty four thousand, seven hundred dollars. Riverboat E F T Fund number two, two, three, five, zero dollars. Boyd Development E F T Fund number two, five, zero, four, zero dollars. Total claims twenty four thousand, seven hundred dollars. Those claims are for Freeman and Associates, four thousand, three hundred, ninety dollars. Hitchcock Designs Group, thirteen thousand, eight hundred, seventy five dollars. And Laporte Chrysler eight, six thousand, four hundred, thirty five dollars totaling twenty four thousand, seven hundred dollars. Motion was made and carried and, um, total claims was passed. Also, the city of Michigan City Riverboat Statement of Cash Position Fiscal Year to Date, June sixth, twenty twenty three Ending Balance, six million, nine hundred, forty four thousand, five hundred, two cents.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Claims Docket, June sixth, twenty twenty three, Fund twenty two, thirty five Riverboat Claims in the amount of twenty four thousand, seven hundred dollars. E F T zero, Fund twenty five, zero, four Boyd Development, zero dollars. For a total amount, total claims amount of twenty four thousand, seven hundred dollars. Is there a motion?
I saw moon.
Well, have a motion by Councilman Paul Preswellinsky and second by Councilwoman Deitch. Ms. Nyla, on the vote, please.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Hi.
Ms. Jagus.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Preswellski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
And Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Reports from Boards and Commissions. Councilwoman Deitch.
Yes, um, yesterday we had the Fire Mayor, um, Commission meeting and, um, coming before you in a few weeks. Um, I know that we're gonna have a workshop to discuss, um, some changes to the Fire Mayor Ordinance, but we also, um, I did reach out to Attorney LaPage in reference to, um, a state statute on, um, some changes in the age, um, uh, requirement for, um, new firemen. Um, it's been changed at the state level to forty years old. And, um, so we talked through that a little bit and, um, so there'll be a workshop on a few changes and then, um, hopefully we'll have some legislation, um, some amendments in front of you in the next, uh, month or two.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I forgot one thing, and, um, one of the discussions is about, um, a lateral transfer pro- uh, program as well.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other reports of standing committees or boards and commissions? Reports of special or select committees? Reports from Mayor or other city officers and departments?
Council President, Council Members, Double Go, Michigan City Fire Chief. Just want to go over our incident counts for the month of May. We had four hundred and eighteen. There was twelve fire calls, uh, floor structure fires, one mobile property, five natural vegetation fire, one outside rubbish fire, and one special outside fire. We had three hundred and thirty eight rescue and emergency medical calls. Eighteen were rescue emergency medical other. Two hundred and ninety two were medical assist with E M S. Point seven, emergency medical service incident and one, uh, extrication rescue. We had eight hazardous condition, uh, non combustible. Seven were spills and leaks. One was electrical wiring equipment problem. We had seven service calls, which included two public service assistants and five unauthorized burning. We had fifty good intent calls, which included, uh, twenty three were listed as other, so I don't know exactly what those were. Eighteen of those were dispatched and canceled en route. We had four long locate, lo- long location, no emergency found. Five, uh, steam, other gas mistaken for smoke calls. Uh, one false alarm and false call, malicious mischievous false alarm. Two special incident types, and those were just listed as other. So, and we also, um, used three knock hands. That's our month of May.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief Lagal?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, petitions.
A petition of W P twenty one L L C to Michigan City Common Council to vacate portions of public street and alleys ways in the city of Michigan City located north of Washington, uh, Boulevard, south of Jake Lane and east to Lauren Road. And also a petition was received, um, in the Michigan City Redevelopment Commission to vacate a public alleyway in the city of Michigan City located in the city block bordered by Franklin Street, Pine Street, Loving Street, and Tenth Street.
Please say your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Dan Greckus, Attorney for W P twenty one. Good evening to our President Fitzpatrick, members of the council. This is a petition to simply clean up some longstanding, uh, street issues that were planted back in eighteen seventy two. So it goes back many years, uh, up in the, uh, as you can see from the petition, on the north side of Washington Park Boulevard and east and south of Jake Lane up by the Beachwalk subdivision there. There were, uh, in the petition, there's a sample of the map that was recorded back in eighteen seventy two. The lots have been transferred from party to party over all these years, but nothing was ever done with the streets that were there. My client, W P twenty one, is the owner of the development there off of Washington Park Boulevard. The subdivision has been approved by the Plan Commission. A P U D ordinance amendment has been approved by the council. This is just some cleanup of these streets that are lingering inside of this very old planet subdivision that were never, nothing was ever done with them. It's vacant property. It's wooded. And they don't go anywhere. They don't really start from anywhere just between the two streets there. So we're just asking for those those str- the two streets and the alley in between to be vacated so that we can clean up the whole, uh, legal description and the whole subdivision there. But that's the nature of the request and this kind of finish up, uh, some of the crumbs that are left over from all these years of all the transfer of the lots that were in that area.
Thank you, Mr. Greckus. Is there any action for us to take at this time? No, I'm thinking. What?
Question.
Oh. In regards to this?
Yeah.
Hello.
On something else.
You'd be surprised. Surprised.
Uh, my name is Alexandria Lyon, resident eight oh two Washington Park Boulevard, next to Dan's, um, uh, client's property. And we received a petition about this, and it's talking about cleaning up this alleyway. And I'm not really certain what's considered alleyway there. Um, I've, I've seen what looks like on the map. However, my husband has owned that property for over twenty years, and it looks like part of that property that they want cleaned up is our driveway. So, um, that part, that driveway's been used as a driveway for over twenty years. That's where we keep our trash cans. I have no problem with the trash cans. But it's our, been our driveway for over twenty years. And, uh, um, it, it was there before he ever bought that property in two thousand and three. So I'm not really certain what would be required of me besides removing garbage can.
Nothing.
Okay. I just, I, that's why I wanted to check with somebody that didn't have your name on here to contact, though. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Any other questions in regards?
So is there an issue or anything with that? I, I guess.
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious about the driveway. Is there like?
Is that, is he, are they gonna be prohibited from using it now?
Well, to, to the extent that the driveway is on the property, the driveway is encroaching and trespassing on the property, so it's actually to the property owner's advantage to vacate the street. Otherwise, the property is on the street. It's just cleaning up the property, and this would be the best resolution for the property owner as well as the subdivision, as well as the city, so we can just clean everything up that way. Mr. Khalil is the, uh, engineer surveyor for the property as well. If you have any technical questions.
Councilwoman Preswellinsky. Yeah, I, I have a question. This is kind of confusing to me what's going on here. It's going to need to be cleared up. So we're vacating. You want us to vacate these alleyways and everything that was taken done back in eighteen seventy two, or whatever the date was. And then this young lady came up and said that her driveway is part of this alleyway. So then if we vote yes in favor of this, then what happens to her driveway?
Nothing happens. In fact, she's better off because otherwise her driveway is over the top of the street. So she's better off because the property is vacated so that it's, doesn't affect her driveway.
She's still on the drive, yeah. Is she still on the driveway? Technically, it's the city.
This doesn't change the ownership of any of the property. It's simply vacating the underlying street drawing that's on the map there. So it'll be the best interest of everybody.
Councilman Preswellinsky.
So, uh, has the, uh, W P twenty one have any co- communication with this property owner on, on, besides the regular notification on vacating? Because, um, on the map, if she's using that alleyway as a driveway, she must own that, uh, partial next to the alleyway, correct?
Her property is adjacent on the west side of this W P twenty one property.
So have they agreed to, uh, accept the, uh, vacated property?
It's not a matter of accepting or not accepting.
They own adjoining property to the vacated. Yes, it is.
It's adjacent, yes.
I, I want to.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Um, Mr. Preswellsky, I think you mentioned that the vacation of the property would require the adjoining properties to agree to the vacation or to accept that property back. Uh, in this case, it's a different subdivision. So the subdivision actually Hughes subdivision, which is a subject subdivision right now. Um, that's the one that has the public right of way, and it's contained in that subdivision. So any property owner inside that subdivision is entitled to the reversion back of the public right of way if it's vacated. So anything outside of that subdivision, even though it's adjoining, but it's a different subdivision because it's lakeside subdivision. So the subject subdivision that we are, uh, referring to in this petition, it's Hughes subdivision. I believe the neighboring property just adjoining to that, it's lakeside subdivision, which is a completely different subdivision.
Yeah, but I, okay. That's the technicality because they're, they're using that as, as a driveway. So now what's the imposing, uh, problem for them is having a new driveway? And, and if I'm wrong, I don't, I might be wrong, is that they're an adjoining property owner, so that property should go to, should, or that partial or half of that alleyway should go to them.
If it's in the subdivision, in the same subdivision, yes, you're correct, but it's not. So the answer is.
I don't, I disagree with that.
Okay.
Okay. I disagree with that because my interpretation is that when you vacate property, if the adjoining property owner gets use of, would get use of half of that alleyway.
You are correct, in the same subdivision.
Wha- what's the subdivision got to do with that?
Uh, the boundary of the subdivision as it's platted at the time. So that joining ownership for that public right of way, it's inside the subdivision. Anything outside of the subdivision, that's a separate subdivision. So they don't have any underlying ownership for the public right of way.
Oh, I hear there's literally two subdivisions.
Right. There is two subdivisions, thank you. So one is Hughes subdivision, but I just want to answer the second question if you don't mind.
What? Okay.
The second question, I believe you have the driveway approach, um, to the property itself. I think the development itself is holding that piece as a conservation, so it's not going to be developed. So the driveway is not impacted because that property that is being vacated, it's a conservation to not be developed.
So you, it's not gonna be developed? So is there been a letter of intent from W B twenty one expressing that concern of these people?
It's not part of the approval from the Plan Commission that this portion of the property will not be developed for the remaining of the subdivision.
Okay, so that's how it came out on the Plan Commission.
Correct.
So they're protected.
Correct, because that property will not be developed.
I guess that's what the clarification we need.
Right. And really, I need to state your name and organization for the record. I'm sorry, I'm, or my name is Sean Khalil, Global Engineering, six oh one Franklin Street, Michigan City. I apologize.
I have a question. Just along the same lines, um, of the question that you just heard. Will there be any kind of restrictive covenant then, recorded on the deed as a result of what came out of the Plan Commission or? Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Speak, but, uh, yes, you are correct. Um, so as part of the P U D that you guys, I'm sorry, Scott York Director of Planning, as part of the, uh, P U D that you approved, um, a few weeks ago. Actually, what you did, you set in motion in that P U D that those are restrictive covenants that are on top of the, of the conserva- what was outlined as conservation easement. Those can never change. They always have to be there. That's part of the P U D. It's actually required even approve the P U D. So you guys made the right decision and locking that in. So, yeah, it'll never be, it'll always have to be a, uh, conservation, and if they want to change that, it has to come back to the Plan Commission, and then you guys have to give another approval because it's a major deviation from the P U D. That, that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, did you have any, um, any more, Mr. Greckus?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So was that all on for the, uh, petitions?
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, communications.
Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on May twenty fourth, twenty twenty three from Mayor Dewayne Perry advising that he vetoed the following ordinance, number four, six, eight, six, and ordinance creating section eighty six dash six point five in chapter eighty six, article one of the Michigan City Municipal Code of Establish a Fund for Specific Maintenance and Repair of Brick Streets Within the City of Michigan City, Indiana. And that's introduced by Mr. Paul Preswell.
Councilman Preswell.
I believe that it's correct to address this under, uh, new bit, would it be new business, uh?
Uh, uh. That, that would be appropriate.
Right, yes. We'll address it at that time.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, resolutions. Oh wait, um, this is a a request to amend the agenda.
Right, uh, I would like to make a request to the chair to move the, uh, lateral ordinance on third reading to be heard at this time. Move it to the top of the agenda, please.
There, a sec.
Support.
All right. We need to go or vote or can we just, if, uh, there are no objections?
You just need to ask if there's any objection.
Are there any objections? Okay, Ms. Nyla, can you please read the ordinance on third reading? You guys jumped the line.
An ordinance on third reading by title only, creating section ninety eight dash two, five, two, and chapter ninety eight. The Michigan City Municipal Code to Establish a Fund for subsidizing parts of certain sewer lateral repairs within the city of Michigan City, Indiana. And this was introduced by Mr. Paul Preswell. Wait a minute, there's probably more. Ms. Tillman, Ms. Angie Deitch, and Mr. Don Preswell.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Any comments from the sponsors?
I, uh, would like to say that I, I believe that we have, uh, pretty well, uh, achieved a, uh, comprehensive directive ordinance on how to handle the, uh, situation from the past and into the future with these, uh, laterals connections out in the, uh, easements for sewers, uh, for sanitary sewers, and that for the general public's knowledge is that, um, a lot of connections go in the right of ways. And a lot of people have problems on the right of way with these, uh, baked tile laterals which were, uh, variate in size, collapse, and shut off their sewer. So in the past, they created a program to pay, that make the, uh, homeowner responsible for fifty percent. And they have been doing that since, I believe, uh, the seventies. So this is an updated version that the city helps and takes some of the, uh, burden off of the homeowners for that particular cost, and that people benefit. Because this is gonna come out of the riverboat funding, is that the homeowners will benefit from it because it will be handled in such a manner that the, uh, sanitary district will basically handle the review of all claims and all, uh, of the, uh, uh, quotes. And that the sanitary district will make the decision on who's the most qualified and, uh, reliable contractor to do the work and to make sure that the quotes are in line, that they're not exorbitant. And after that process, they will be, uh, forwarded to the city. They will invoice the city controller in the, uh, I personally believe that this is a direct benefit to a lot of people that are having problems because if you ever had your sewer cut off or stopped working, it's, it is a terrible, uh, disaster to go through. Um, I went through it, and it was a different situation. But I think that as having the riverboat for so many years and not creating this program, that I am very glad that we have it in front of us and that we're gonna make some movement on this particular, uh, pro- uh, program. Because there's just a great need in that we can, we'll have some control on, or not really us having control, but we'll have some input into watching how this thing develops and knowing where the need is to change these, uh, get these sewer fixes on the main lines and, and as there are residents from Pearl Street today here, that Pearl Street, I want to remind everyone that was in the study on the, uh, Lafayette Barker Sewer Project was the first street to be identified to be worked on because of all the previous problems on that street. And right now, there is a program going on on Lincoln Ave because of so many collapses that they are totally putting in a, a new line out there and, and new hookups and repaving the street. And they're repaving the street with our M V H funds and C C grant mon- money. So I don't, I don't think, I caught that at, uh, one of the, uh, sanitary meetings, but I would, uh, as if anybody has any questions for me, I, I think that, uh, uh, Councilwoman Zag- Zaga, we, we, uh, addressed your issue about having something set up on how it will be controlled and, uh, thoroughly, uh, I guess you could say audited. You know, it'll, it'll be, you know, the, and also that I will say the sanitary district has their program. How they've been doing it and, uh, uh, looking over the program, that's how they've been doing it. They get three quotes and they, the sanitary district actually, you know, picks out who they think's the best bid on that, you know, who can make a sewer. It all depends. There's a lot of things that go into it on the price. How deep the sewer is, if one, they go down so far, they have to, uh, uh, what do they call it? Uh, and reinforce the street so it doesn't collapse. They gotta patch the street to specification. So it, 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 it is pretty, it is salty. It's a salty, uh, process on getting that fixed. That's really, that's all I have to say. Do I have any questions by anyone? Or?
I have some questions.
Yeah, accomplish from those sponsors first.
Yeah, so, um, so for the latter, so I, I support putting together a program. Um, one thing, and I, I, I wait till after we allow, um, people in the audience to speak before, um, um, we seek to possibly, um, table just for one more meeting. Um, one of the things I want to ask the attorney, um, if that's okay, um, Council President, to, um, get some clarification from. And, and myself and Councilman Don, uh, did speak about this, and I know he has some comments. To make sure we understand what the financial risk is, um, how much do we need to, if we, for the retroactive piece, what the total amount will be for the retroactive piece so that we understand what the cost is? And then what does the program look like going forward if we implement something like this? Um, and for them to tell us to their best of their knowledge, um, it sounds like the program that they do, they get three bids. They do all the proper, you know, preparation. They take the, you know, the three, one of the three bids, and then they move forward with the pro- with the process and, and approving it. So I'm okay with that, and I think that's good, but I, I just don't think it should be the responsibility on city property for residents to pay for it. So that's just my, it just doesn't intuitively that makes sense. So, um, I want to allow them a chance to speak before I, uh, before. I want to allow them a chance to speak before I before we do anything like that. So I'll leave my comments for for council comments.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other comments from the sponsors? Councilman Don.
Yeah, Mr. President, I think it's a it's a very good ordinance. The only issue I have with it is the amount of funding that we're going to do on a annual basis. And the reason I said that is because I did some fact checking. And I called the sanitary district, spoke to Steve Sanford, Assistant Superintendent. And I asked him what the cost is going to be going back retroactive to twenty nineteen from where we're at today. And he told me that they did, I believe, ten hookups. And so and on average, it was about ten thousand dollars. So you're looking at a hundred thousand dollars going back three years. He also said that on average, they do four to six of these laterals a year at the average of ten thousand. So, you know, it could be a few more, but anyway, you're talking at the max six a year. So that's sixty thousand dollars. I think two hundred and fifty dollars or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars coming out of Riverboat and is a little excessive. I think that, you know, if we we have a workshop and talk about it and see exactly what we would need, instead of just saying, let's put two hundred and fifty thousand and just take it out of, take it out of the riverboat, I think we need to be a little bit more precise on on. And I know we can't predict the exact amount, but I think two hundred and fifty thousand is excessive. And if we can use that money elsewhere in the community, then so be it. And on an annual basis, this, right now, it's two hundred and fifty thousand. That two hundred and fifty thousand will be replenished. So at the beginning of every year, there's going to be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that account. So if they use two hundred and fifty, you get two hundred and fifty on January one. Come December thirty-first, there's only a hundred thousand. Well, then the city controller is going to put another hundred and fifty thousand in there, bring it up to two hundred and fifty thousand again for the next year. So to me, there will always be plenty of money in there. I just think going into this, the amount is excessive. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the sponsors? Comments from the public?
Hi, Lino Chase, Spur Town lead, four thirteen Pearl Street. I guess I can attempt to understand that you're saying the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is excessive. And I understand that. This is a long process. I appreciate everything you guys do, but please also understand that twelve thousand dollars for one person is excessive. Like, this is a huge impact. And so I guess my other thing is Lincoln Street, it was Lincoln Street. So if we would start actually working on the streets that actually need the repairs, this would not have been a problem. So there was already, you know, something addressed, and it was supposed to be fixed, and then it was never fixed. So you're putting the burden back on us. And it is very difficult. So, I mean, thank you for moving us to the front of the agenda. We do appreciate that. And if we have to wait, we will, as long as you continue to go retroactive, but just know in the future, like, if we have to start going to the sanitation department, tell us, and we'll do that because something needs to be done on Pearl Street, and I'm sure there's lots of other streets. We're just frustrated by this fact that when we hear Lincoln Street or we hear numbers like there's six million dollars in a riverboat fund, why we can't have the money to help us? Because it is very, I've I've been up here before, and I've said it, to not be able to flush a toilet with a family of five, it's just very frustrating. And you're going to get more and more. So I can understand the money. I'm just, I'm not, I I want it passed eventually. So if we have to wait one more time, okay, we will. We appreciate all you do, but just please, you know, think about us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Comments from the council? Councilman President.
If I may, I would like to talk about finances. With the figures that were brought out today, going back to two thousand and nineteen in an average of six a year, that comes out to a total of at just ten thousand dollars, three hundred thousand dollars to get this program up and running and together. And that doesn't leave, so you're shy, if you do the math at ten thousand dollars, but you should actually do the math at between twelve and fourteen thousand, because that's what I heard is the average price going on on lateral repairs. So actually, the money, we don't have enough money right now, and I thought I was being conservative. But also, I did do my fact checking, and I asked the superintendent to give me those figures, and they haven't produced them before I even introduced, when I introduced this ordinance, to give me those figures, and they haven't been produced yet. And I talked to him last week before he went on vacation, and he's apologizing to me, and I said, you know, Mike, I need this information because that's what's going to set the program, how how much money we need. So that I already did all of those things. But the bottom line is this, we can't, we should not even think about cutting the money because that amount is we're going to need a little bit more as the way, if you do the math, and you do it even as a conservative figure of six a six a year, as Mr. Stanford quoted you, Councilman Prisbalinski, is three hundred thousand dollars at ten thousand dollars. So I think we need to, you know, find out where we're at and at least get this program going. And I'll leave, I'll leave the, I'll leave the rest. Yeah, yeah. And apparently, you know, if Councilman Paul Prisbalinski misunderstood or if I misstated what my point was, is that Mr. Stanford told me that they did ten, ten since between twenty twenty-two and twenty nineteen is what I said. Okay? And that right there is ten times ten thousand is a hundred thousand dollars, not three hundred thousand dollars. What I also said is that they do four to six a year at ten thousand dollars on an average cost. So that on an annual basis, they're telling me it's sixty thousand dollars. That's why I think we need to table this for one more meeting and get the actual numbers that we're dealing with here so that we can put a actual price tag on what we need to finance this program with. That's my whole point. And those are the figures that I gave earlier. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman. Councilwoman Deitch.
Yes, so if we can add, ask for the actual nut figures from the ten that they've done completely and what the cost was, and then you know, what the anticipated recommendation is annually on how many they'll do and what the existing current pricing could possibly be. So that if we talk about a cap, what that could look like, because I know Councilman Paul Prisbalinski had a conversation with Attorney Meyer and include him on it so that if we do have some type of workshop that we have all those figures so that we can be and the controller can have that conversation as well with us. And I know Mr. Miladovich will be back next week, so maybe we can look at some dates late later in the week, next week. So at then, I would like to anybody else? I'll move to table until the next meeting.
Just if I could, just a recommendation, before you do move to table, there were some changes that have been made so far. It might be efficient if we amend by substitution today and then table it so that when we come back.
Every, so I, well, I'll do that then. I move, everybody has a copy of the amendments. I moved to amend by substitution. Yeah, I leave by substitution.
Support.
I have a motion to amend by substitution by Councilwoman Deitch, second by Councilwoman Tillman. Sign up on the vote, please.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prisbalinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
And Mr. Don Pross.
Aye.
Seven in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nilo.
Now I can table. Okay, I moved to table.
Support.
Second by Councilwoman Deitch, second by Councilwoman Tillman.
Till the next meeting, correct?
Till the next meeting.
Most, the the motion was to table until our next meeting.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prisbalinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prisbalinski.
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, table to the next meeting. Ms. Nilo, can you please read our first resolution?
A resolution by title only, reconfirming and expanding the designation of the economic revitalization area within the city of Michigan City and extending the life of said designation through twenty twenty-four. And this was introduced by Ms. Deitch and Mr. Dan.
Any comments from a sponsor? Councilwoman Deitch. He was.
No, I don't have it. I don't have any comments at this time.
Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council?
My apologies, my information was in my mailbox that I would expect. So this is to establish or expand the economic revitalization area. I thought I thought our city planner was in here, and I don't see him.
He was.
To to make a couple of comments. So this is something that we need to do, and this was established in nineteen eighty-seven. And this resolution is to expand the economic revitalization area. And one of the whereas clauses that I would like to read in particular that is important is that found that the citizens of Michigan City will benefit from the creation of additional jobs, expansion of the property tax base, protection of private investment and revitalization of those areas designated as the economic revive revitalization area. And this is pursuant to Resolution thirty-one ninety-nine, which acted to stimulate private development and development consistent with the laws of the state of Indiana. And in twenty eighteen, we also adopted very same, reconfirming the economic revitalization area. So it's done consistently every several years. And what that does is anything that we've annexed, it allows us to to encompass those areas into the revive into the economic revitalization area. And that's what this resolution is doing. It's just reconfor- reaffirming and adding anything that we've annexed over the last couple of years into that into that designation.
Any other comments from the council? Councilman President.
This is just renewing what what we've already established, basically. Okay.
Councilwoman Tillman.
Motion to accept.
Oh, second.
Yeah, we did.
I second it.
Yeah, we have a motion approved by Councilwoman Tillman and second by Councilwoman Deitch. Ms. Nilo, on the vote, please.
She already did. He already did. It was quick.
Mr. Paul Prisbalinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prisbalinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
And Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
Ms. Nilo, can you please read our next resolution?
A resolution by title only, approving submission of application for a grant, the city of Michigan City from the Indiana Department of Transportation for the two thousand and twenty-three Community Crossing Matching Grant Program and supporting the local match for said grant. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch and Mr. Don Prisbalinski.
Any comments from the sponsor?
Uh, Mr. President? Yeah, this here is just that the city is committed to matching the state grant that we're going to get for black topping in Michigan City. So we will match a million dollars and the state is going to give us a million dollars so that we have two million dollars to black topping with this coming summer. And yeah, that's it.
Any other comments from the sponsors? Comments from the public? Any comments from the council? Councilman President.
Um, yes, I would like to, this evening, I made out a map, had asked they to get a master map of the resurfacing of the city of Michigan City from two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty-one. And the indication on the maps, it's colored, it's will show you basically there's a couple of years that nothing, nothing got, no resurfacing got done. And if you look at it, which I'm not, I just want to point, I want to point out that the streets that were done, and if you look at, then I gave you another map. If you, if you look at, and I'm going to use the second ward as my schematic to talk about the paving program in general in the city of Michigan City, that the second ward has a great majority of streets that are in the area of a one to three, which is means they're they're in very bad condition, very bad. And that the rest of the streets are also either fours or fives, which are very, a very bad condition. So what I bet, what I'm basically getting at is that I look at this map and I look at Washington Street that has one inch gaps on it, cracks, that when they go after the, which I had a workshop many year, a couple of years ago about, and gave everybody a booklet on road maintenance, that once you go that big, it isn't even worth seal cracking the road. The the pro- the correct procedure is to have that road resurfaced to stop that water penetration into the road bed. My thing is, my thing is that if you look at this paving list right now, there is one segment of street that is on it in the second ward. And it is Lafayette Street to Greenwood Ave, which is it is in dire need of paving. But you know, when you look at this thing and and I believe that that's I believe that that's another piece of legislation that we, as we seen the practice with this administration to have, to have a committee formed, that this gets run through a committee and not through, uh, late, late people who determine which roads are going to get paved in the city of Michigan City. Um, I'm, you know, I'm compelled to vote for this because we're going to use grant money from the state. But as I said earlier in the, um, meeting, is that they're doing sewer repair in the Third Ward and the sanitary district is not paying for it. We're paying for it out of the MVH grant fund money. And I think that that was wrong because it's taken away from paving in another ward. And I believe that the amount of paving was eleven hundred linear feet, which if you go by that, it's a four block area, because the average block in Michigan City is three hundred feet long. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council? Councilman Tillman.
I just have one question. Um, I wish that, um, Mister Minnick was with Haas and Associates was in attendance or someone from this, oh, sorry, I didn't look up to see. Um, I just have one question because we just got a notice of the streets that's going to be closing, um, in the very near future. And one of those was South Carroll Ave. Is that going to impact, uh, South Carroll Ave to East Barker Ave, which is on the, uh, twenty twenty-four construction season list?
Good evening, Brad Minnick, Haas Associates. The list you're referring to is associated with the Nicky Double Track Project, um, that, um, portion of South Carroll Ave, I believe. That's the list, um, that Chris Jagelski sent out last week and then again to, today, he had sent it to me, um. But you're looking at what would be, the list before you tonight is a twenty twenty-three CCMG application for twenty twenty-four construction. So that is separate and independent from the Nicky Double Track Project.
I, I'm, I'm aware of that. So my question is, because they're separate, will there be an overlay in regards of getting this street paved?
We would, we would.
Far down to the tracks of South Carroll is it going to go?
It, it goes the limits for this segment on South Carroll Ave are from East Barker Ave to Cool Spring.
Okay.
Does that, does that answer your question? So we were, we're ma- very mindful, um, to stop, um, and stop at the intersection, um, to avoid, you know, repaving recently paved streets.
Okay.
So.
Thank you for clarifying.
Any other comments from the council?
Yeah, Mr. President. Yeah, I, this, uh, thank you, Councilman Paul Kozbanski for this map, because this is very, uh, very interesting. I didn't, I didn't know that we could get or we had the availability to get a map like this and tell us exactly what's going on with black topping in Michigan City, because certainly it has, uh, to me, it's fallen off the, uh, the radar as far as getting, uh, streets blacktop. Uh, a lot of these, I mean, you look at Franklin Street now, look at Michigan Boulevard, uh, those streets there to me are, uh, in bad condition in some places. And there are some streets that, you know, take for example, uh, Alfred Street, although it's not a very busy street, that street there is totally falling apart. Uh, that, that street there is behind Ivy Tech on the south side of town, back in that area. So I know it's not used a lot, but still, uh, falling apart. And take for example, uh, York Street, the blacktop intersections that they have on York Street where the streets all brick, but then you come to the intersections and you got two inches of blacktop that you gotta hit, or you gotta slow down and go five miles an hour. Do- doesn't any of that work? Can that be included in, you know, what we're doing here, get these things repaired? And to me, it makes no sense to go down York Street, you go to those intersections at Madison, Thurman, and maybe Homer. And, uh, yeah, I mean, the blacktops that high over the co- over the, over the, uh, brick street makes no sense why something like that's not being repaired. But, and I know you guys got a rating system that you use to do this, but uh, you know, sometimes I don't have a lot of faith in that, uh, that rating system, so. Yeah. I just wanted to go with that. Thank you. But of course, I'm going to support this because we got to do black topping. We're, we're three years behind on black topping.
Uh, move for adoption.
Second by Councilwoman Tillman. Miss Nyle upon the vote, please.
Miss Tillman.
Aye.
Mister Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Miss Dyche.
Aye.
Mister Don Kozbanski.
Aye.
Mister Simmons.
Aye.
Miss Jerkis.
Aye.
And Mister Paul Kozbanski.
Reluctantly, aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Miss Nyle. Resolution passes. Can we please read the next resolution on, uh, our, our next resolution, please?
A resolution by title only approving submission of application for grant for the city of Michigan City from the Indiana Department of Homeland Security for body cameras and supporting the local match for said grant. And this is introduced by Miss Dyche.
Any comments from the sponsor?
Um, yes, Council President. So, um, this is for, um, body worn cameras and a total of sixty-one thousand seven hundred forty dollars. Um, so it requires a fifty percent match and this money has already been budgeted in the police department's budget for twenty twenty-three. Um, so basically this will, um, provide relief to any monies that were already, um, approved in the budget. So, um, of course, um, this is always, um, a benefit to, to have, you know, updated equipment. And all of the attachments have been included. So the match is thirty thousand eight hundred seventy dollars, which is, like I said, has already been, um, uh, approved in our, in our annual budget for the, uh, operating expenses for the police department. And I know Chief Assistant Chief Corley is here if there are any questions, but again, a grant is a grant, so, um, hopefully everybody supports it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Also to approve.
They have motion to approve by Councilman Simmons and second by Councilwoman Dyche. Miss Nyle upon the vote, please.
Mister Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Miss Dyche.
Aye.
Mister Don Kozbanski.
Aye.
Mister Simmons.
Aye.
Miss Jerkis.
Aye.
Mister Paul Kozbanski.
Aye.
And Miss Tillman.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
Resolution passes. Thank you, Miss Nyle. Um, can you please read our next resolution?
A resolution by title only adopting LaPorte County multi-hazard mitigation plan prepared by LaPorte County Emergency Management Agency. And this is also introduced by Miss Dyche.
Any comments from the sponsor?
Sure. So this particular, um, uh, this particular, um, resolution is in reference to, um, the, uh, multi-hazard, uh, plan that the, uh, EMS, um, uh, the countywide EMS group, um, actually adopted. So I'll just read a couple of the whereas, so everybody understands what this is. So, uh, whereas the Michigan City Common Council recognizes the threat that natural hazards exposed to people and property with, uh, within LaPorte County, Indiana. And the LaPorte County Emergency Management Agency has prepared a multi-hazard mitigation plan entitled LaPorte County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, April twenty twenty-three, in accordance with the federal laws, including the Disaster Relief Emergency Act, the National Flood Insurance Act, the National Damp, all of those different things. So this is, um, us, um, adopting the countywide program um, as, um, a part of the county. And, uh, that's what this is in reference to.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council?
And the, the other thing that this, um, is in reference to, because I don't think people understand flood insurance can be expensive. Um, so, um, it identifies goals and actions to reduce and eliminate that risk uh, for people and their property that may be impacted by, um, future, you know, disaster. So I just want to make sure that, um, people are aware of that. And I'll let other people speak before I ask for adoption.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other comments from the council? Uh, Councilman President.
It, is this gonna, uh, the approval of this plan, are they, they're not looking at changing any of the flood plans, are they? In it, or just how to mitigate it?
This is just a mitigation plan and, um, it was attached as an exhibit um, as well with the, uh, with the document that we have. But no, it doesn't change any of that. I think we went, we, we did something along those lines last year, um, where we had, um, a deadline to meet and we had a special meeting to get that, um, approved because we were, um, coming up on a deadline, but this is strictly a mitigation plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council?
Move to adopt.
We have a count, uh, most to approve by Councilwoman Dyche and second by Councilwoman Jerkis. Miss Nyle upon the vote, please.
Miss Dyche.
Aye.
Mister Don Kozbanski.
Aye.
Mister Simmons.
Aye.
Miss Jerkis.
Aye.
Mister Paul Kozbanski.
Aye.
Miss Tillman.
Aye.
And Mister Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Miss Nyle. Can you please read our next resolution?
A resolution by title only approving request to connect to Michigan City Sewer Utilities by Lake Shore Sewer LLC for benefit of properties located at two sixteen Lake Shore Drive, twenty-one twenty Lake Shore Drive, twenty-two sixteen Lake Shore Drive, and twenty-two thirty Lake Shore Drive, and twenty-two thirty-four Lake Shore Drive. And this is introduced by Mister Don Kozbanski.
Comments from the sponsor?
Uh, Mister President, uh, yes, this here as the title states, there are five residents on Lake Shore Drive, close to the vicinity of Chassleton Drive that want to, uh, install their own sewer line, uh, from Lake Shore Drive down Chassleton Drive to the Hacienda area. That's the road that goes, uh, past Hacienda where there's a lift station there. And the residents are going to pay for the total installation of the sewer. They are also going to pay for any costs associated with the sanitary district coming out there, doing any inspections, you know, whatever, any, any other kind of work that the sanitary district would be involved with on this project. And in talking to the district superintendent, Mike Malatovich, he says that the district will be able to profit anywhere from eighty-five hundred to ninety-five hundred dollars a year on the, uh, sewage costs coming into the plant. So with that being said, Attorney Mike Bergerson is here this evening representing the, uh, clients along with, uh, Tim Haas doing the engineering work. And, uh, they're going to give us a presentation on the work that's going to be done there. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council, uh, Mister Fitzpatrick, President Michael Bergerson, uh, six oh one Franklin Street, uh, attorney for the petitioners in this matter. Uh, I want to break my presentation down into four different areas. First of all, who are the petitioners? Second, what's the project? Uh, three, uh, what's the cost to the city? And four, why are, why are we presenting this project? First of all, overarching, um, the presentation should be the unprecedented, uh, in my opinion, investment uh, and commitment, uh, being made by these five homeowners along the north side of Lake Shore Drive situated between the twenty-one hundred and twenty-two hundred, uh, block of, of Lake Shore Drive on the north side, on the lakeside. Uh, there are five homeowners, one of whom is, uh, present here, Mister Patrick Clifford, uh, to support the petition. Uh, and he certainly fully supports it. Currently, they, the, the, these homeowners are on what's kind of known as a pump and dump system. They, they retain their sewage on the premises and then have haulers come in monthly, bi-monthly, or as needed, uh, remove the sewage, uh, to, uh, to, uh, a secure facility. Yeah, to the district probably, you know, so that's where it goes. This is a long-term solu- we all know that that's not a, 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 a long-term solution. The, the long-term solution is a, and this project, uh, is that long-term solution. But a low-pressure, uh, hydraulic pumping system, eight hundred feet along Lake Shore Drive. And then I think it's like twenty-nine hundred feet down Chassleton Drive to reach to the, uh, uh, intersection of Fairway Drive and Chassleton near the Hacienda. Uh, the, the entire cost of this project is being borne by these five homeowners, uh, the cost to the city, uh, is zero. Uh, the homeowners are not only paying for the project and the, and the have secured the rights of way and the permission from the town of Long Beach, which again, wasn't the easiest, probably the easiest thing to do, uh, to get into the right of way. They're, they're going to have to repair the streets, uh, for any damage done in, in installing this, uh, hydraulic force main. And Haas and Associates, Tim, here has, he'll explain it as well, uh, to you, whatever those questions you might have that I don't. Uh, but the, um, well, the town has given the permission, sanitary district has given the permission. And, uh, again, uh, the waivers by these homeowners that, uh, part of, and part of this new ordinance that was adopted last December, uh, all these homeowners have uh, signed the waivers, uh, to either agree to the annexation or agree not to remonstrate. And, um, in the, in the event of any future annexation, if any, uh, for a period, I think it's fifteen years. So, uh, what's the cost again to the, the next part? What's the cost to the city? Uh, zero. Uh, they're picking up the entire cost plus any cost this district incurs to, uh, move this project along. And then, uh, as I said, uh, it's an unprecedented investment uh, in not only the, uh, environment, but the community as a whole, but I, it's going to help us all ultimately down the road. Long-term solutions are always better than the short term that's currently pending. Uh, Mister Haas is here. I'm here to answer any questions. Mister Clifford is here as well. Um, so let's have that and have a nice conversation about it. It's a pretty, you know, uh, non-controversial project, really.
Right. Well, I, I don't, I don't have any questions, but I do have a, uh, a letter here from Mike Malatovic.
Yeah, yeah, he's simply in board.
Yeah, to, uh, Mister Callahan?
Yes.
That's part of this project?
Yes, he's one of our owners.
Yeah, and I, and if I may read this for the record, just to clear up any, uh, misunderstandings or uh, anything that people may be thinking of, is that the Michigan City Sanitary District has reviewed your application for sanitary sewer construc- construction permit uh, per three twenty-seven IAC three. Uh, our review focused on whether our POTW has sufficient hydraulic and treatment capacity to serve up to ten single-family homes located in the town of Long Beach, Indiana. Such service would be provided by a privately owned and operated low-pressure sanitary sewer network connecting with our existing manhole located at the southeast corner of Fairway Drive. Yeah, and Chassleton Drive in Michigan City. The low-pressure sanitary sewer system upstream from our existing manhole shall be owned and operated by Lake Shore Sewer LLC in portuity, and the district shall not be responsible for its construction operations or maintenance at any time in the future.
That's right.
Okay.
They formed, the, the five owners that formed that LLC called Lake Shore Drive, uh, Sewer LLC. And they, that will be the entity that is going to be, um, responsible for future maintenance, future building. Uh, Sewer LLC, and they, that will be the entity that is going to be um, responsible for future maintenance, future building, and uh. It's, it's uh, yet to, you know.
Forever.
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 Right.
Okay. So I just wanted to read that for understanding purposes. Thank you, Councilman.
A, in addition, I, I did have a, a great conversation with Mr. Malevich um, yesterday or the day before. Uh, related to the project, and yeah. As it related to the earlier one that was, didn't go forward, but he said he's, he's far more supportive of this one. Because of these uh, homes are going to be directed down Chassleton to Fairway. Drive hydraulic lift station as opposed to going west along um, Lake Shore Drive to the lift station at B and E. He just thought that ultimately that. That uh, location may be getting overloaded at some point, whereas this one has much uh, much greater capacity for this develop. Just to bring that to your attention.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna go to public comment, then. What are the questions that uh, Councilman? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Councilman President.
Um, that is, a cou- my, couple of my concerns are. The uh, you said they'll own it forever. I thought that when you install a private sewer that you can only. Uh, own it till it is either, you, you recoup your money or.
This isn't one of those type of sewer, you know, maybe a, it would be a, 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 in a. Situation in which uh, you've got a clay tiles type or a gravity feet sewer, but this. They're gonna be responsible, and they're committing to their being responsible. Well, for the maintenance forever in there.
Oh, okay, so.
The district's agreeing, they're, they're telling us they're not gonna take it over. It's, it's theirs.
So they're, they're gonna own the system. And they're gonna be able, on the capacity, how many homes additionally are they gonna be able to hook up to? Has that been discussed?
It's, the letter, as Mr. Malatovich's letter has indicated, up to ten. There's five current.
There's only ten?
Only ten.
Well, uh, what's the diameter of that sewer? Is it? The, or the main, the main line?
Tim Haas with Haas and Associates Engineers on the project, three-inch diameter plaster.
Three-inch diameter?
Three-inch diameter, probably definitely.
All right, thank you. And that's about all it can handle. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council?
We'd ask for your support.
Move for adoption.
Support.
Second.
Of most of the people by Councilwoman Deitch, and second by our Councilwoman. So, same, Councilwoman G., it's not even how votes, please.
Mr. Don Prozabulinski.
Hi.
Mr. Simmons.
Mr. Simmons. Hi.
Ms. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Prozabulinski.
Hi.
Ms. Tillman.
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
And Ms. Deitch.
Hi.
We have seven in favor, and I want to propose.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Judge.
Okay, can you please read our next resolution?
A resolution by title only, seventh edition, an initial plan for use of portion of the city's allotment. Of local physical recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act to allocate money to act. Assist with funding of a designation playground in Feder's Alley for the park department, and this is introduced by Ms. Jacobs. Ms. Angie Deitch, and Mr. Don Prozabulinski.
Any comments from the sponsors?
Yes, um, I hope everyone has seen a presentation about the, this future playground because it is absolutely amazing. And one comment, there's a lot of entities that are participating financially. And a lot of work being put into this, and this will, this will be just something that's very unique and very special about Michigan City. Uh, when we were told about the ARPA money, we said, well, we have to think about what's gonna make an impact in this town twenty-five years from now. And this is one of those things. It's for all people, including people with disabilities, adults with disabilities. It's a fantastic uh, project, and I wish if you haven't seen anything about it, you would, you know, contact Ms. Eason from the. The, from the park department to get a copy of the presentation.
Thank you, Councilman. Any, any other comments from the sponsors? Comments from the public?
Ernie Hollahan, three oh two Gladys Street. This will be great, but. They need to get the uh. Water park going next year or this year. They need to. It didn't work the whole year last year.
Thank you, Ms. Halligan. Any other comments from the public?
Sheon Eason, Assistant Park Superintendent. Uh, we are working on converting this splash park to a freshwater system. We're currently waiting for the I DAM permit to be cleared, and as soon as that's done, that will be of an operational. Free of charge to all Michigan City residents and visitors as well.
Thank you, Ms. Eason.
Yeah, Tommy Clavik, thirteen sixteen Ohio State, they're just like Shannon Eason just said, they're waiting for the I DAM permit. It takes thirty days. If that's where it wants to remonstrate against that opening. That's what Mayor Perry says, supposed to be fourth of July, but my problem is with the mayor, he should have had this done. Prior to, when he said it was coming up on Memorial Day, he should have had this all taken care of in April. So, you know, that's, that's shame on the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Clavik. Any other comments from the public? Comments from the council? Councilman President.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to uh, personally thank, thank the A R P. Committee for uh, approving this funding. I've been involved with this project from the very beginning, in fact, been working on this project, I think, three years now. Shannon, is that when?
Since November of twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, okay, so two and a half, three years, close to that timeframe. And we have visited ten different parks in northern, in northern Indiana. And northeast Chicago, yeah, area Illinois. And we have done a lot of work, a lot of studies on it. Have gotten public input on it. It is something that, just as Councilwoman Ziegus said. That it's not gonna be just a park. It's gonna be a destination area for this city. And. To use this money for something for the public. That'll be able to use this. Besides buying garbage trucks, buying snowplows, and things of that nature. This is something that people will be able to use. For years to come. The playground that's here now, or I should say the playground equipment. What do you have? Maybe a slide and a uh, some monkey bars and a couple swings. Those have been there for seventy years. They're not even, they are not even, what do you wanna call it, safe by playground standards? Yeah, so that needs to go, but what's gonna happen there? If you can. Imagine this. It's gonna be for senior citizens. It's gonna be for everybody. Uh, there's gonna be a walking track around this whole Feder's Alley area. There's gonna be stationary workout equipment. That anybody can use, and it's gonna be located adjacent kitty-corner from the senior center. So if the seniors wanna come over, go for a walk in the morning, go work out. It's all good, it's gonna be there for everybody to use. And especially, it's gonna be there. For people with special needs, handicap-type folks, wheelchair-bound. Uh, visually impaired, hearing impaired. For people to use that and enjoy a park. I mean, if you can visualize it. You know, you see. Normal folks like us enjoying things, but then people with disabilities that can't enjoy it. And to me, that's not right. We should be able to have a facility like that in Michigan City for everyone to enjoy. And that's what part of this money is gonna be used for, for that uh, that playground. And yeah, once this is done, we're gonna go out, we're gonna be hitting the streets and doing fundraising. And we're gonna get the job done. We will get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the, uh, council? Councilman Prozabulinski.
Um, I want to uh. Bring out some information about the uh, park and the designation of Feder's Alley. Uh, Feder's Alley, I've given you all maps. I did some more research that uh. The um, the uh, area that they're talking about converting to this park right now is a greenway area. Of eight point four acres, and I have gone to a uh, um. Park board meeting to discuss the location of this particular uh, park. And there, I also gave you this map, which includes eight acres, which i- encompasses. The bathhouse right now down in, by the main entrance of the park, and. South of the parking lot for the senior center that's never full. And also the parking lot by Sunset Grill that's never full. And there's another segment that uh, is. Open, and there's a roadway that goes through there or alleyway. But that's a little bit over eight point four acres. I went to a park board meeting. Talking about the location and destroying that greenway pro- property in Feder's Alley. And people, or the comments were made that. Well, wh- why didn't I speak up before? Well, I will say this, that. The A R P committee. Is a ad hoc committee. They do not post an agenda. They do not even post when they're gonna have a meeting. So you couldn't, how would you know to go to when they have these meetings because, as I said, it's an ad hoc committee? And there is no agenda, no minutes, nothing put together. So. What I, what I'm looking at is. Feder's Alley was always and has been reserved for Michigan City people only. So I put a request in a freedom, im- freedom of information request. To know when this was changed. Well, I have the results of that, I, I got that results of that. Uh, request. And as I read these minutes that were produced to me by the park board. That it had been discussed at several different board meetings on. The use of Feder's Alley, people coming to Feder's Alley, controlling Feder's Alley, it, people in and out. But I haven't seen any. Any indication of the removal of that area reserved for Michigan City residents. So I think that. People should take a step back and look at moving this facility. So that you have what they call a controlled audience, and it's located down by the zoo. The splash pad and that park area that's not being used down by Sunset Grill in the, in the office space. And that they can rebuild the bathhouse down there and improve that whole area down there and leave Feder's Alley alone. Because if you remember or not, the big hoop-dee-doo that when they talked about building a restaurant. On Bismarck Hill. Or, and when they wanna develop the restaurant at the end of Feder's Alley. Several years ago, probably twelve years ago. I think that this is uh, you should keep pristine land alone. In, in our park. And that developed area that is developable and make it to good use. And leave Feder's Alley alone, make it what it should be. A picnic area and a area to enjoy your family or things of that nature. So. I, I personally believe that this request should be tabled and more input put into this. On moving the location. Now, I know that Shannon's gonna say, well, we spent money on the engineering and all this, and that you can move the engineering. I believe that you can. Re-engineer anything because nothing has started. Yes, they have put some stakes in the ground. But, eh, you know, what, what the heck is going on here? I'll tell you what's going on. You're gonna. Destroy, and I don't care how you say it, you're gonna destroy eight, over eight acres of pristine green space in the city. And, and everybody, all the people talk about we're losing tree canopy and green space. And he, here we're doing it right here in this project. The maps are proof in the pudding on how much acreage there is. Proof's in the pudding, and also. As being a Michigan City taxpaying resident. I, I take it that Feder's Alley is still reserved for Michigan City residents. Not from people from Illinois. For Michigan City residents to enjoy. And that's why I pay taxes, and that's why I live here. So I can go enjoy Feder's Alley. I don't want all the ruckus that's in lot one, or what, whatever's going on down there. So that, I believe. If I would have known this was gonna be discussed at an A R P meeting, I would have brought this and got this research together. I'm just asking people to take it, take a breath. And save some green space. Let's, let's relook at this thing. And if you ask me, you wanna have a controlled audience. You know, a venue, and that's what they've already pushed. It's a venue, okay? But let's get it in the zoo, so the zoo benefits, the park benefits. And people are, have their area right there. It's condensed. And people wanna come to that park, they can go to the zoo, do whatever they wanna do, go to the beach. Cause I don't think you're gonna be hiking over the hills with uh, you know. Handicapped people, you know, I, I think you should have it where it's more conducive to their use. And that's why, at this time, I can't support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council?
Yeah, Mr. President. Yeah, uh, and in response to what Councilman Paul Prozabulinski's talking about here. There is no indication whatsoever, there is no plan whatsoever. To use eight point four acres of Feder's Alley as you're referring to. I don't know if you've seen the plan or looked at the plan, but the park is gonna be down at the west end of Feder's Alley. And I don't know exactly the amount of footprint, but I can guarantee you, it's not gonna be. Even maybe a third, probably not even that. And, you know, and, and then the other thing we're talking about is putting a walking track. Around Feder's Alley, that's gonna be four foot wide for people to enjoy. There is no way that a walking track is gonna destroy any pristine area to go down there right now. If you go down there now, you have senior citizens that are walking out in the driveways, out on the parking lots, out on broken sidewalks along Lake Shore Drive. To try to enjoy a walk. I don't think that's a very safe area for tax-paying senior citizens to have to walk up and down a parking lot. But thank you for your uh. Input on this.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council? Councilwoman Deitch?
Yeah, and, and the other thing that um. That will happen too is that there are grants that are being sought out by um, county foundations. We're seeking funds from local companies to support it. Um, this is not just a city project, it's a community project. Uh, and hopefully that will happen with the other parks. That will get companies to buy in and pay for some of those things as well, but this isn't just money from the city council. It's also, we're seeking additional and matching dollars from foundations. It's also we're seeking a- additional and matching dollars from foundations and from companies to support it. So it's not just the city paying for everything for a change. And I think that's a good thing and a model that we should follow, you know, into the future. So I just wanted to state that there is gonna be a sponsorship, uh, package that we're gonna be begging for money, so.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council? Councilman Preszbalinski.
To, uh, discuss this plan, uh, Councilman Don Preszbalinski, I did look at the, at the plan. And I did see that, that walking area is gonna take up the whole perimeter of the, of the park. But since you said that it's not gonna take up the whole park, then I, I don't see why it couldn't be moved down into all that available space down by Lot One, down by Sunset Grill, if you said it's only gonna take up one third of the space. And that, cause, uh, people said they didn't have enough room down here. But if it's only gonna take up one third, then I guess the argument is you have one third in that area right there around the wash house that you could remodel the wash house and utilize the, uh, construction money in a very proficient manner. Cause that wash house down there is probably, uh, probably fifty years old at least. And I'm the, and I'm not against having a, a facility down there, but it's use, why do you have to destroy more green space? You have a ton of space down there, down by Sunset Grill and down by that whole area to the north of the little, little playground per se down by the bathhouse that you could modernize and facilitate it. It's just being stuck on doing this thing in Fetter's Alley. Then you have a, that controlled audience to benefit the zoo and increase the revenue at the zoo with that investment down there. So I think that I believe that it's a more efficient use of our public space. Thank you.
I have one question for Shannon, if you will. Um, real quick, what was the thought process in selecting this specific area by Fetter's for, uh, this development?
So in, in twenty fifteen, um, the Park Board did a Washington Park Master Plan. It was a citywide plan funded by the Redevelopment Commission. It lasted fourteen months. There was robust input to the plan. That would be the appropriate time to come out and comment on the designs of Washington Park, the placement of different facilities in Washington Park. So again, that was a very robust public process. Um, the features of Washington Park that came out in that master plan were determined for several reasons. The reason that this playground was not chosen to go in the area that, um, Councilman Preszbalinski is talking about is if you look at our master plan, there's a spine created that's a pedestrian walkway or an esplanade that connects the beach to North Point Pavilion, to the zoo, and also to the Splash Park. It creates additional needed parking in that area. Um, as far as Fetter's Alley playground design, which right now we're past the conceptual plan into the beginning of design. It's approximately three point four acres on the west side of Fetter's Alley. It does not destroy green space. All the trees that are healthy and native have been preserved. There's a plan for increasing native sensory gardens in the area. And it's a destination playground. We're not looking for an audience that already exists. We're looking to bring in a regional audience to something that we do not have in the region, including in the Chicagoland area. Um, so those are the facts. The time for the input on the master plan was twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen. Again, there were many, many, many meetings held, there were surveys that were available, there were renderings that were put out there. This was all laid out in the plan and we are simply following the plan that we paid for instead of recreating the plan after we paid to engineer. And I appreciate the council's support of paying the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to engineer this project and get it started. But at this point, it doesn't make any fiscal sense to back up and start the public process over again and spend dollars that we've already spent.
Uh, thank you, Shannon. And one more thing, is it possible to, uh, email that master plan to the council? Cause a lot of us weren't on the council with twenty fifteen.
Absolutely. It's also on Park's website on W W W dot E Michigan City dot com. Um, hit on Parks and Rec and it's been out there since it was published in twenty sixteen, but I will certainly email it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Preszbalinski.
I agree with, uh, uh, Councilman Fitzpatrick's take on that master plan. That a lot of the council members weren't aware of those meetings at the time. But that's just like any master plan. There's a, there's a bunch of them sitting in the plan department that were never enacted and done. But every plan can be modified because then you analyze it. And that's when you really come out with a good plan, when you analyze a proposed, uh, plan. So what I will also that I wanna put out there is that, you know, this A R P money is, is like a runaway checkbook. And none of that money, not a dime, has been spent on section four of the criteria from the federal government for water and sewer infrastructure. And that's another reason why I'm not gonna support this. That that money and what's left of it should be used for water and sewer enhancement in the areas that a proposed study has already been done and no action has been taken on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council? Councilman Preszbalinski.
Motion to approve.
Support of a motion approved by Councilman Preszbalinski and second by Councilman, Councilman Simmons.
Yeah.
Ms. Nidel, wanna vote, please?
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Shigas?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preszbalinski?
Nay.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
And Mr. Don Preszbalinski?
Yes.
We have six in favor and one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nidel. Can you please bring our last resolution by title only?
A resolution by title only, a resolution of the common council of the city of Michigan City, Indiana, commemorating the seventy ninth anniversary of D-Day. And this was introduced by Mr. Paul Preszbalinski.
Any comments from the sponsor? Neil?
Can I, uh, ask the chair to have Gail read it in its entirety?
Yeah, yeah, it's so. I'd say if not, uh, one of us would, we could read it.
You didn't read it?
Yeah.
Or Councilwoman Deitch read it.
Damn, why did I still have that?
A resolution of the common council of the city of Michigan City, Indiana commemorate, commemorating the seventy ninth anniversary of D-Day. Whereas June sixth, twenty twenty-three marks the seventy ninth anniversary of the Allied landing at Normandy during World War Two, where over five hundred ships and landing crafts, ten thousand airplanes and over a hundred and fifty thousand Allied forces took part in operations overload, code named D-Day. And whereas the Normandy landings for the landing operations and associated airborne operations on Tuesday, June sixth, nineteen forty-four of the Allied invasion of Normandy, Operation Overlord during the war, during World War Two, code named Operation Neptune and often referred to as D-Day. It was the largest seaborne invasion in history. And whereas while our troops continue to face challenges while serving in Iraq and Afghanistan, we must recognize the tremendous sacrifices made by the members of our uniformed services on that fateful day in June. And whereas it cannot be forgotten that the reason we enjoy peace and opportunity to prosper is because of the veterans who made the ultimate sacrifice to preserve the freedom we often take for granted. And whereas lest we forget, Memorial Day is a day for honoring and, and remembering the military personnel who died in the service of their country. And whereas let us now honor, remember and offer tribute to the men and women who fought for freedom and who have laid down their lives in pursuit of that freedom on June sixth, nineteen forty-four. And whereas research and operational missions include coordination with hundreds of countries and municipalities around the world. As this map shows, at present, more than eighty-one thousand five hundred Americans remain missing from World War Two, the Korean War, the Vietnam War, the Cold War and the Gulf Wars and other conflicts. Now therefore be it resolved that the council, the common council, the mayor and the citizens, citizens of Michigan City honor the men and women who have served in our nation's armed forces and laid down their lives in pursuit of freedom. This resolution shall be in full force and effect after passage by the Mrs. Michigan City Common Council and approval by the mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Angie. That was very good. Thank you. Uh, I would like to make a comment on the resolution and I hope that everybody realizes that what today's date is. Today is June sixth. And, uh, I hope that as you go through your life and your day-to-day, uh, life, that when you meet a veteran, you thank him for their service if you wish. And, um, there's a, a lot of people that have disrupted their life to be drafted and volunteer their service for us. And just to think that people, those, especially in, in the great generation, sacrificed years. They were in it for the long haul. They weren't getting out till it was over. I mean, that's to fathom that, it's not like, I wouldn't say it's not like any, any service that you're, uh, you didn't volunteer for. Cause when you volunteer, you know what you, what you're getting yourself into. But, um, I mean, some people were in that, in that conflict. Um, over six, six and a half, sometimes they weren't released for a long, I mean, as a, I just can't even thi- think of it being in there. And every day you hit the beach, you survive the beach, then you go in and you're, every day, you, not every day, but you're in all those battles. And to survive that? That's truly a miracle. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any comments from the public?
And Tommy Klawick, uh, thirteen sixteen is Ohio Street. Thing about D-Day that would always amazes me, it couldn't, we could never pull it off today. You know, it was top secret plan, you know? Anything that happens around the world is on TV instantaneously. So, you know, nowadays that would never happen. You know, that's slow for our greatest generation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Klawick. Any other comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Motion to support.
So then, yeah, motion approved by Councilwoman Tillman and second by Councilman Preszbalinski. Ms. Nidel, wanna vote, please?
Ms. Shigas?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preszbalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preszbalinski?
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nidel. We'll take a five-minute break. So this meeting has to order. Ms. Nidel, can you please read our first ordinance? By title only?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, an ordinance vacating a public alleyway located in the city block bordered by Franklin Street, Pine Street, Love Street and Town Street. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch.
Any comments from the sponsor?
Sure, um, this petition is in reference to, um, the double track, uh, project, um, and I know that we have, uh, Shiv Khalil here from Global Engineering, if we have any questions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any, uh, comments from the public? Any comments from the council? Having none, this will be held over for a second reading. Ms. Nidel, can you please read our next ordinance on first reading?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, an ordinance vacating a portion of the streets and alley in the city of Michigan City located north of Washington Boulevard, south of Jake Lane and east of Lorn Road. And this is introduced by Mr. Davy.
So Davy isn't not present. Any comments from the public?
Formal public.
Oh, this is our formal public hearing, so any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Public comment is closed. Any comments from the council?
I just have a, I just have a procedural question. It says that this is a formal public hearing, but first reading. I'm not sure about that. So that was advertised. I'm just saying.
It, it can't, it doesn't matter.
Uh, reason being that it was, um, he wanted to have it this evening. And you have to do it, I think it's twenty or twenty-five days you will prior to having the formal public hearing. And I believe that, um, Amber asked if we could do a- all three readings?
No.
I believe she did make that request, but I, I did think it was odd that it was on, listed on the agenda as first reading, but then also listed as a formal public hearing. I, I know the background though, but when you read the agenda, it is a little confusing.
Can you share the background? Because I'm not, um, with.
It's not a first.
Cause it's usually an emergency request and and are there some deadlines that are gonna be missed?
Cause I'm not familiar with that.
But I agree. Attorney LaPage was the one working on this. I don't have a whole lot of background on this.
This, Councilman Davy online.
Um, is this Mr. Grandquist, is this the request that, um, you had for the petition earlier?
Alright.
Is, is this the, um, ordinance vacating the portion of the street and alley that was part of the petition?
It's part of the petition.
Okay, um, can you give us a little, um, background? Are there some time constraints that are, um, attached to this that would be deemed an emergency?
It, it's really not an emergency. It's the timeframe, uh, the timeframe, I think, uh, yeah, so, so the timeframe actually is for the planning commission to hear it for the secondary plan. Because the vacation actually needs to happen first before any secondary plan gets reported. So the, the planning commission will need, um, after the, I think, the third or fourth.
Fourth user?
I'm sorry. I don't have the exactation of the planning commission. But my point, I guess, that the, the planning commission will not the secondary plan will not be approved without the vacation for the second meeting that is coming up for the planning commission.
So.
Why we had it advertised in the paper, May twenty-third.
Okay.
So that we could have this formal public hearing this evening.
Right, and, but we don't have to do all three reads because we have a second council meeting before, before the planning commission.
Correct. We just wanted to make sure that in case if we don't make this meeting, we can actually go on the twentieth
Okay.
and create the, have the public hearing.
Alright.
So we can meet the deadline for the planning commission for the secondary plan. So I think
Yep.
we're okay. We met the deadline for this meeting. I think the first reading is okay. There is no emergency. So we're going through process as well.
Alright, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
So, that's possible. Any other comments from the council? Alright, this ordinance will be held over for second reading. Ms. Nidel, can you please read our next ordinance on first reading?
An ordinance on first reading by title only approving and authorizing the use of training and equipment reimbursement agreement between the city and new applicants to the police and fire department and creating section seventy dash one oh two F and section fifty-four, one thirty-nine in the Michigan City Municipal Code. And this is introduced by Mr. Down Preszbalinski, Mr. Paul Preszbalinski and Ms. And this is introduced by Mr. Down, Przebelski, Mr. Paul, Przebelski, and Ms. Tillman.
Any comments from the sponsors?
Mr. President?
Councilman President.
Yeah, I, and I just want to read a uh, quick whereas out of this ordinance that kind of sums it all up. What this ordinance is uh is about. And uh, the whereas says the common council reasonably believes that it will be in the best interest of the city to require prospective applicants to the Michigan City Police Department and Michigan City Fire Department to agree to reimburse the city for costs incurred by the city for training and equipment if the applicant voluntarily terminates employment with the city within sixty months after taking the oath as either an officer of the police department or a member of the fire department. So that's uh, five years after they join. They wanna voluntarily leave, then they have to reimburse the city back for their training and for their equipment.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the sponsors? Council, Councilwoman Tillman.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. My only comment is um, this is something that has been discussed since twenty nineteen. And it has been asked by many of the council members that something like this be put forth um, in order to possibly um, to retain our officers and our firemen. So I totally am in support of this and I will only just say this, even though now that we did do those um salary increases, bonuses, I hope that the fire department and the police department don't foresee this as a deterrent for um, getting recruiters to come in. I feel that if they see this, if they are true and dedicated to what they're wanting to do of being an officer or to, to serve, to protect it, to serve, then this shouldn't be a question if they want a job or not.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other comments from the sponsors? Councilman President.
I uh, to, I do agree with the uh, comments of, of previous to me by Councilman, Councilwoman Tillman and Councilman Don Przebelski that this was talked about prior to um, three years ago or, and it has been a point of discussion through our different negotiations and the thing is, is that I, I agree that it's not about training somebody, it's about having the trainee have a commitment to the city of Michigan City. And if you really want this job here on where we are very competitive on our pay now and I think that as uh, representatives of the city that we, we have to look at what we're doing and that we have to stop the bleeding. We have to stop this, this being a training ground for other departments. And that's what I think, I believe that this will do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any comments from the public?
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Uh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
You got up. I was already standing. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is Tommy Kalavich, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I'm also a member of the Michigan City Fire American Mission. I just want to pass along your next meeting on the twentieth. You're gonna have an ordinance on first reading, amending our ordinance the downstate, they, did any general same, they changed it where you can start accepting applications up to forty years old instead of thirty-five. That's gonna be changed now, so that's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich.
Brian Wright, President of Michigan City Paternal Order of Police Dunes Lodge Seventy-five. Um, excuse me, I'm gonna read off of this. This year we've made significant progress in the pay scale for our department, along with allowing lateral transfers to come to our department. With this step forward we have made, this ordinance will take us two steps back. In the law enforcement community, departments that attempt to enact an ordinance such as this throws up numerous red flags, such as what is wrong with this department and why do they have to lock someone in for this long period of time? I know some of you have done some research and I have as well. Departments that have attempted to do this have hiring issues along with not being able to enforce this. Since learning of this ordinance, I have pulled officers from different agencies and asked their opinion on such an ordinance. There were no positive comments. There are, here are only a couple of their opinions. Sounds like you have a desperate department. Any department with that mindset is garbage. A city council posing this as a sign of a weak administration. It is cheaper to treat workers properly. I would not work for a department like that. They are making someone sign a contract under duress because if they don't sign it, they do not get their job. These responses are not how we want Michigan, the Michigan City Police Department to be portrayed. We want our department to be portrayed as one of the top departments in this area. A department that attracts people and retains them, not because they signed some contract saying if they leave, they owe us money, but because they want to be here. Would you guys take a job that requires you to stay somewhere for five years? And if you leave, you have to pay them back because of the training you received from that place? What if we hire somebody and they make it through part of their training and determine the police work is not for them and they are not comfortable doing it? Would we rather they leave for the safety of themselves, our officers and our community without fear of having to pay the city back? Or are we now going to force them to stay and be a liability for five years until they can leave without being penalized? Or what if somebody has a family emergency or a significant other that has to move out of state for work, something that is unavoidable? And that event, if, if that happens, we will be penalizing them for something that they can't help. Instead of passing this ordinance, I ask that we make an ordinance to reward our officers for staying at the Michigan City Police Department. As this is what will make people come to us, boost the morale of our department and encourage officers to sell our department to other people looking for a career in law enforcement. Currently, people are receiving a seven thousand dollar bonus for coming to the Michigan City Police Department. Why don't we make an ordinance that will pay our officers that same amount over that period of five years instead of penalizing them if they leave in that five years? That is something that will get people to stay on our department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Rodney McCorrick, Rodney McCorrick, sixteen seventeen Union Street. This is a great idea. Um, no one wants to talk about the past. How many officers have left? Get trained by Michigan City and run somewhere else. It's, it's common. It, 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 and it's comical. Uh, every time we ask, first it was to pay, we pay them. They want vehicles, we give them the vehicles. They want new guns, we give them guns. We give them everything in the world, but at some point they have to give as well. This is the same thing I've been talking about, Don Przebelski, for ten years now. We give the police everything. You give them, you vote for everything they want. What's wrong with just giving us a little bit of security? Um, there's a shooting on my, uh, a block over from my house last night. Um police officers leaving every day. They get trained here and they leave. This is something that needs to be done and dealt with. I don't know about the time period. Uh, how long you think this should, uh, this should take place? Five years or what? I don't know. But this is something that needs to be put in place and it needs to be put in place right away. Nobody should be against this. We are, we compromise with the police and fire department and now the police and fire department need to compromise with us. We, we asked for body count footage to be given to citizens for free. They raised total hell about that. This kind of reminded me of a book I was reading on a famous pimp named Iceberg Slim. He said pimping ain't easy. If you keep letting, if you keep letting them take it, they're gonna keep doing it. At some point we have to stop. Thank you.
Good evening, Brian.
Wait, wait a second, please. Mr. McCorrick, I'm gonna ask you a question, please.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead.
You said, you said there was a shooting last night?
Yeah.
Where?
On Emily Street.
Somebody got shot?
Nobody got shot. It was uh, Mr. Mr. Wright was there. Uh, several shots. That was uh, very scary. Lot of people scared, but that's, that's here and there.
Okay, alright, no, I just, I just wanted to, because when somebody gets shot, the city council is not made aware of it unless they read about it in the newspaper. So I was just wondering, maybe you had some information that we didn't know about?
Well, I just
Thank you.
There's a lot of information you don't know about. Maybe as city council members and people that's running for office, um, maybe you need to be more aware about what's going on in the community. Quit taking um, the mayor's word for things and get out and learn what's in the community. You do it a lot. I've seen Angie a lot. Um, I, I've never seen um, I, there's a lot of people I haven't seen. My ward member only seen her one time in five years. This is nonsense. So thank you for doing the work you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCorrick. I'm still a little uh, shaken by that Iceberg Slim reference, but uh, you know. First half of everything. Comments from the public?
Brian Gross, eight thirty West Sixth Street. Um, my only comment would be if you are going to uh have a sixty-month period where they must stay without paying it back, it should probably be a prorated uh, payback. So if they're here uh, twenty-five months, they only uh you know, they get a credit for the twenty-five months they work and don't have to pay the whole amount back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Any comments from the public?
Ernie Hollahan, three oh two Gladys Street. I, I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Wright uh. I can remember back in the fifties, fifty-eight on up. I could, every police officer on the force I knew. You, you, you knew them by their name because they were, they stayed around. So there was a reason back then for them staying around. We need to create a reason now for them to stay. Probably it's financial. It's the money part. This other area is gonna offer them more money to come with them. But I think we should try to keep as many as we can here. Thank you.
Double goal, Michigan City Fire Chief. Um, I respect the police more than you'll ever believe. Um, I respect their opinion and, and we had the actual, we actually had the same concern when we read it. Exactly what the officer was talking about, or if you have a person that does decide firefighting is not for them or police work is not for them. You don't want them to hang around. Um, but I believe there is a stipulation in there that I read at the very, towards the end that under certain circumstances, the chief can um disregard that, that payment back. So there is a stipulation in there for that. I just want everybody to make sure they're aware of that. Um, but and I, I do believe it's prorated. I thought there was something in there about the pro, they didn't have to pay it all, but it was three, three years, maybe four years. I, I don't remember exactly. It's been a while since I've read it, but there's a stipulation in there. If we do have somebody that we see that they want to leave and it works just not what they want to do, we don't want them either, you know, because of the safety reasons. So there's a stipulation in there for that.
Thank you, Chief. Any other comments from the public? I do have one question I wanted to ask Officer Wright. Um, and this is in regards to the uh, the recent salary increases that we just gave and the bonuses. And the applicant, the, I think it was May twentieth or something, you guys had like a fair or something. What was the result of that? Was this uh, increase in salary a good recruitment tool?
I honestly cannot answer that as I was not there or that, so I can't speak on it since I wasn't there. I apologize.
Alright, no problem. Thank you. Uh, comments from the, any other comments from the public? Alright, Council, uh, comments from the council?
Yes, um, so I, I thought the comments were very interesting from Mr. Wright, um, Officer Wright, and I think that maybe since we have just increased the salaries, maybe it's time to wait to see if that alone is enough to bring people in. Because if it's gonna be a morale problem to say, well, I'm not going here because I have to stay for five years no matter what, you know, that's kind of be, gonna be a deterrent. So we don't want to have an enticement by an increased salary and then all of a sudden put this deterrent on as well. So I would like to see if we can wait and see what the effect of the larger salary is on the recruitment and kind of see what's going on because you could always put this in later.
Thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Dyche.
Um, I, I know as far as recruitment, we just um, had another um, swearing-in ceremony and what I was told by um, some of the assistant chiefs is that um, they believe we might be at full complement by the end of the year. Um, we've had a couple of lateral transfers now, um, thanks to um, implementing that into the policy. Um, so this will be the first time, and also let me say that um, these last uh, couple of swearing-ins, they are born and raised Michigan City residents. Unlike previously where the majority of um, the recruits have been from other places. And, and let's just face it, if somebody moves here from somewhere, somewhere else, they probably, probably can't get in at home and just waiting to go back. And so now uh, they've had at least three, I think from the AK Smith program that um, is the criminal justice program that are now um, one was sworn in this past week. Um, so now we're seeing the fruits of that. The only disconnect is, you know, they're eighteen when they graduate. And then they got waited a couple of years to come on because of the age, you know, restriction that we have. So I think some of the things that are happening are starting to work. Um, I do believe that and I think having, you know, uh, especially like the last graduation. Three of our graduates were stars of that graduation. Um, they were officers. Um, one received the top award, um, uh, Officer Tillman. Um, Doparowski, she was a class, you know, Doparowski in boots. They were um, battalion chiefs or whatever they called them in their graduating class, and that was from the, across the northern Indiana region. They were the top in the class of all these sixty graduates. They were Michigan City graduates from the high school. And we're starting to see that unlike ever before. And um, so I think they're our biggest recruiting tool. Um, and um, I think we're, we're gonna see the fruits of that here over the next couple of years. So I just want to share that. Those are some of the comments. And I did reach out to um, to um uh, two attorneys from um, Lake County asking about their, their um, did they see any change in, in implementing this? And they said they didn't. Um, and you know, some people have moved away because they were relocated, but they didn't see an uptick or downtick based on the ordinance. So it was kind of neutral, but they said they didn't see it. It didn't help or hurt. If they were on to leave, they left anyway. And they spent more money um, fighting the, you know, going to court to get the money, the, the five thousand dollars. So that was the only thing that um I thought was um, interesting that they spent more in attorney fees trying to go get the money and suing them and small claims. So um, that was some of the feedback that I got.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other comments from the council? Having none, this ordinance will be held over for a second reading. Um, Ms. Nylo, could you please read our next ordinance on first reading?
An ordinance on first reading by title only. Approving additional appropriation in the budget of the ARP Coronavirus Local Physical Recovery Fund for the seventh addition to the initial plan for use of a portion of the city's allotment, local physical recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act to allocate monies to assist with funding of designation of playground in Feder's Alley for the park department. And this is um, introduced by Ms. Jagas, Ms. Dyche and Mr. Down.
Any comments from the sponsors?
My comments stand as it was on the uh, resolution.
I, I would like to, to add that we um, I knew a presentation we, we did one at ERPA, but we need to probably do the, the presentation here at the council meeting. I thought we did.
We did, we did it.
So, and I thought we did.
Long ago, not long ago, but we did it before.
Okay. So, so we actually had a presentation of the destination playground that was, it was up on the screen here and for the public to see it. And I just wanted to make sure that we share, maybe we get a copy of that presentation and post it and have copies at the next council. And post it and have copies at the next council meeting for the public to have. Um, just so that, um, because I know I thought, and that's what I thought. I thought we actually had a full presentation. When we passed the legislation for the engineering that it was brought forward at that time. So I just wanted to make sure that I go back and find out what meeting that was, um, because um, I'm almost certain that we did.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, any other comments from the sponsors? Comments from the public?
Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street. Um, I can't remember the exact number, but I wish you guys, if you don't mind, tell us the exact number. Of what it's gonna take to get that part done at Washington Park. Um, outside of that. I live in the first ward. I have four playgrounds in my, in my ward. Those playgrounds are, we talk about old equipment. It it is, doesn't make sense. And then you say you wanna build this park to make it for uh, bring in, attract more people from the region. How about the people from the city? How about the people who live in the first ward? How about the people who live in the sixth ward? How about the west side? How about those playgrounds over there? Well, second one, we got Gardena Park. It looks awesome. I said, I said again, we would love to have Gardena Park. Uh, our playgrounds look the same as Gardena Park. But you have that, right? You are, you got that on your neighborhood down. We don't have it in our neighborhoods. A lot of us don't go to Washington Park. A lot of our kids don't go to Washington Park. Um, there was all kind of stations where you can do exercise, physical stuff at, at Washington Park and some, how, some way. People just stopped doing it. I wonder why? But that's, that's, that's here nor there. The people from the region can't vote for you, but the people that live in Michigan City can. You cannot continue to ignore the playgrounds in the first ward. The second ward, third ward, the sixth ward. You cannot continue to do this. To take all of that money. And put it in one playground is wrong. And not make any other improvements to the rest of the playgrounds in our neighborhoods is shameful. And we're not gonna take it too much longer. I don't know why we doing this. Uh, Paul, I, me and you spoke about this, um. Some of that money needs to go into playgrounds that needed. We got Ridgeland, Ridgeland Playground, Ridgeland Street Playground. Right by that dock. Go look and see how that look. And look at the old equipment that the kids have to pay, play on. And look at it. And you tell me what you think about that playground. Half the fence is tore down. Um, we go out on King Drive, uh, Oak Hills, whatever, whoever named it, Oak Hills Park. Look at that playground. Fences tore down, trees falling every day. Um, is one of our most busiest parks, but we have done nothing to improve parking. Or to do anything else out there, Gene. I mean, these, these things are just. It's sad that we are sitting here spending all this money in one playground. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Comments from the council? Councilman Preszblinski.
Uh, to go along with the. The comments of Mr. McCormick that. The neighborhood park program, as far as I'm concerned, has been abandoned in Michigan City. All right? But I will say this, so the public knows this, the price tag for this park, this destination park. Four point three million dollars, all right, in, in one park. And the reason that they had come back to the ARP Committee, from what I have gathered. Is that they had made presentations to other foundations and they said that the city wasn't putting enough money into it. That's, that's why, that's why this is in front of us. They didn't make no commitments. They just had the reasoning that. The city didn't have enough skin in the game, okay? But my skin is this. I'd like to know of what happened at Ames Field. That when they created Ames Field, I was on the committee that. Helped and worked with the school system. That there was always supposed to be a part, a playground down there. And that, I don't know, it just disappeared. And, and now, but I'm gonna find out why. And. From what I understood, when that property was deeded to the city. It could never, the city always had to hold on to it. It could never be deeded to anyone else or sold. So we're gonna find out what happened with Ames Field, you know? And that was just. An agreement so the si- uh, school system could build on it. This is the problem, is that the neighborhoods, and this is what gripes me, are being ignored. In the playground facility, I mean, why don't we have some negotiations going on with the. Saint, Saint Anthony's on having a park located on their facility that they tore down? I mean, uh, you don't have to do something real big, but you could do something, you know, I mean. Or even, even a place like a peace park where. You got trees around there, you got the right kind of plants to cut down on road traffic and you can just go in there and relax. You know, have some peace. But we're gonna, so let's make sure everybody knows that that's gonna be four point three million dollars. For that park. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council?
Yeah, and just to uh. Uh, reply to some of these uh. Comments is that, you know, I, I agree that. Some of the neighborhood parks are not being maintained the way they should be. You know, there's councilmen in those wards, they can speak up, go to park board and get things taken care of. I'm a councilman at large and I saw what I thought was this need in that park. Which is located in the first ward, okay, on north side of town. That it would be a great idea for this community, it'd be a great idea for people with special needs. To be able to have somewhere to go to a park and enjoy it. There's nowhere in Michigan City for someone to go, not unless you're gonna go to Gardena and they have one swing there. For a disability uh child. Other than that, you don't have anywhere in Michigan City. To take a child in a wheelchair or an adult in a wheelchair or anything like that. What do you have in Michigan City for the senior citizens when they go to the senior citizen center that they wanna go and. Use the track, go work out, you know? It was a lot of, I'm a senior citizen. I like to walk. But that's the whole concept behind it. And I think you're stretching the four point three million dollars, Councilman Preszblinski. It's not gonna be four point three million dollars. So I believe everybody get their figures and facts straight before they come up here and start talking. Uh, these kind of numbers. And the majority of the money. The majority of the money is gonna be fundraised. It's not coming from the city. We got two hundred, two twenty, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. From our money for the engineering to get this park looked at, to get it engineered. And yes, now we're asking for the city to get skin in the game so that we can go out to other. Uh, foundations to say, okay, you guys gave this much, the city's interested, we're gonna help. Otherwise, they're not gonna give you a dime. I don't care if you wanna rebuild Gardena Playground for a million dollars. It would be the same exercise. So that's what's, that's what's uh going on here. Uh, I understand about the neighborhood parks and the park department has their plan. Right now, they're working on Tower Park. I don't know exactly how much that's gonna cost. So they got done with Gardena and now they're going to Tower. I don't know where Oak Hill is going, but if I guess, if I have to represent the whole city on. Talking to the park department, well, Councilman Dabney, he's the liaison from the city council to the park department. You know, city councilman can call him and let him get involved with the park department. And see why these other parks aren't being uh maintained the way the citizens of Michigan City want them to be maintained. And if there's a problem. Mr. McCormick, you can call me anytime. You have before. If there's a problem out at Oak Hill, I'll meet you out at Oak Hill. So it's only ten, you know, what, five minutes from my house. I have no problem doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council? Alright, so this will be held over for second reading. Snidel, could you please read our only ordinance on second reading?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the rainy day fund. For an emergency purchase of Pierce Enforcer one hundred foot. Rear mount platform aerial fire truck. And this is introduced by Ms. Dyke, Mr. Paul Preszblinski, Mr. Don Preszblinski, Ms. Tillman. Mr. Simmons, Mr. Dabney, Mr. Mack, and Ms. Jagas.
And this is our formal public hearing. Any comments from the uh, council, uh, sponsors?
Um, just that, um, we talked about this uh, in, in great lengths before. I'll be asking for um, a third reading this evening for this, um, after we get to public comment.
Any other comments from the sponsors? Comments from the public?
Yeah, Tommy Klobic, thirteen sixteen Iowa Street, Michigan City Fire Department Commission Member. I want to thank you for moving this third reading. I know it's really important. I wanna emphasize how important is we have. I don't want to spend two million dollars on this. This ladder truck, but uh, you know, this Monday, six days from now, it'll mark the fifty year anniversary of the. The inferno that destroyed the Pullman Standard Railcar Shops. Um, I don't think anybody has been around, ever, will, will, will forget that, that night. You know, it's, well, all the workshops already closed and they were converting it over to warehouses. Wensky's bought it. Now they were, were doing some welding, the contractors, and they left a bolt smoldering. And you know, they, they're shipped in, they all went home. Unfortunately, nobody was in it. It was empty, you know, no injuries or deaths. But you know, the. Winds were blowing out of the south that night and they carried the embers over the lake. It had been on the scale of another great Chicago fire. We just. This, how vital this is to have all this, we have a good fire equipment, because you know, we're gonna be putting in these, these buildings and. You know, the station block and the, the, the old police station is news dispatch, so. Just wanna see how important that is as we get this all passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Comments from the public?
Double goal, Michigan City Fire Chief. I'll keep it real quick and brief. Thank you so much for the support. I see, I think everybody's a co-sponsor. We had a workshop on it. Thank you for coming in on your own time for the workshop. The special meeting that you had for it. I appreciate it. I know the firefighters are really gonna appreciate it. And I just wanna restate that it's, that all the information that was brought up at the workshop, it's a definite need. It's not something we want or would like to have. It's a definite need. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Any other comments from the public? Any come, a public, any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Our public comment is closed. Comments from the council? Councilman Preszblinski.
Uh, well, I, I wanna thank uh, Chief Legault uh. For giving us that information and, and the truck team for coming up with that. Additional information on what is needed. But wh- what I would like to. And also what I would really like to emphasize tonight is that. The Cool Spring Ladder is out for repairs. So, and it's gonna be out for repairs for a while. And matter of fact, I talked to one of the uh, whatever you want, the administrators there or the chiefs. And that it's up in Michigan getting worked on. So that means that. That's our mutual aid responder unit. So we need to get that truck. For everybody's benefit ASAP, as soon as we can get it. So yeah, we, we definitely need to have that third reading tonight and get this thing move. Well, we do have it moving along. And I wanna, I wanna thank uh. Chief Legault for being so cooperative in this process. And I think that. We, we have come to a new uh passage in, in, in time through this whole process. Okay, I wanna thank the chief, you know, for that. Really being up, upfront and truthful about, or, and bringing the information, you know, to us and getting in contact with us, what his needs. Thank you. But I didn't know if you knew that or not, that there, you did? Yeah. So, so also them ladders.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council?
Yeah, I, I moved that, we moved this to uh, thir- third reading.
Second, we have a motion to uh, move to. Third reading by Councilwoman Dyke and second by Councilman Preszblinski, Big Wood. Uh, Ms. Nylam, wanna vote please?
Mr. Paul Preszblinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Ms. Dyke.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preszblinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
And Ms. Jagas.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nylam. Could you please read this ordinance on third reading?
An ordinance on third reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the rainy day fund. For an emergency purchase of a Pierce Enforcer one hundred foot rear mount. Platform aerial fire truck. And this is introduced by Ms. Dyke, Mr. Paul Preszblinski, Mr. Don Preszblinski, Ms. Tillman. Mr. Simmons, Mr. Dabney, Mr. Mack, and Ms. Jagas.
Any comments from the sponsors? Any comments from the sponsor?
Motion to approve. Oh, I'm sorry.
Do it for you, right? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council?
No, done.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilman, uh, Don Preszblinski and second by Councilwoman Dyke. Ms. Nylam, wanna vote please?
Ms. Tillman. Aye. Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Ms. Dyke.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preszblinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagas.
Aye.
And Mr. Paul Preszblinski.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nylam. We need the truck horns. Okay, uh, new business. The council has one appointment to the urban enterprise zone due to Mr. Ken Fly resigning effective. Where?
Why you doing on a brush?
I know what I'm doing?
Yeah.
Okay. Just making sure. All right, the council has one appointment to the urban enterprise board due to Mr. Ken Fly resigning effective May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Term will begin immediately and expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Where are the applicants? And another FYI. It's not on here, but um, we need to make one appointment to the Economic Development Commission. Um. The EDC is a fiduciary board for oversight of the bonding process. This is a three-member commission. This is different from the Economic Development Corporation Board. Uh, the mayor has an appointment, county council has an appointment, and the common council has an appointment. So if anyone is interested. Please uh submit your interest or what can have there for our next meeting.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Yeah, and, and we had this discussion um, at the redevelopment commission. Um, I don't know if you recall when. The county uh, county council man approaches, we had to have. Appoint someone to a three-member board. This has been some months ago. And, and it truly is uh, is probably a one meeting deal. Um, but again, it's something that's let, that is, it's. I think it's state statute that we have to do it. Actually, it is a state statute why we have to do it. So. I think it's state statute that we have to do it. Actually, it is a state statute why we have to do it. So um I um reached out, I think Skylar reached out to council president Fitzpatrick to share that. Um, I know the county council is um working on their appointment and then the mayor has an appointment and then we get more. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Under new business, I would like uh ask the uh Council microphone, please?
Well, thank you, Drew.
Councilman Prespolinski?
I would like to ask the attorney's uh advice if this is a proper time to bring up this veto under uh new business?
It is.
Okay, uh I would like at this time to uh make a motion under new business to override a veto that was uh subsequently uh determined by the mayor of Michigan City on ordinance forty six eighty six, and that is the uh uh ordinance on Brick Streets Maintenance. Well, excuse me. I uh would like to, at this time uh the uh letter from Mr. Attorney Zernick talks about the uh proposed ordinance and maintenance and repair of the uh Brick Streets and also the use of regulating or telling us that we couldn't uh regulate the use of the way I interpreted uh boat, uh riverboat monies. Because it had nothing to do as far as I interpret it as telling them how to use their TIF monies. But I do know that uh he cited a case from Munster that the town of Munster or the city of Munster was using their TIF account, TIF monies to maintain and run their golf course over there. That's just a quick overview of the decision. But I, they brought this up, people brought this up before and all I'm, all I'm trying to do is create that pot of money so that when uh and it's determined that they're going to start working on these streets to uh fix them, to reconstruct them, that we have the money available. And that is the whole essence here is reconstruction, because they're way past the maintenance stage. So I'm I'm uh, I am asking the council to veto, override this veto at at this time.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion. I'm so, excuse me, I'm making the motion to override this veto at this time.
We have a motion by Councilman Prespolinski to override the veto and second by Councilman Simmons. Snyder, want to vote?
I have a question. Um, do we have to vote? Or can we make comments? Is that the pleasure of the?
It's pleasure of the chair.
The chair. I asked for comments.
That's what I'm a dice.
Alright, um, so um, I I'm going to support the the override. And a couple of things that um I want to bring up, though. Uh, I do plan to bring this back up um for some amendments after after this is complete, not after I support this. And there's a couple of things. I know that um it says that in in the letter that it says it's illegal for uh this to be uh, it's not illegal, it's just not good policy. It's not necessarily illegal as stated in the mayor's um correspondence. Um, so I want to make that clear. This is not illegal, what was done. Um, but um for policy sake, and especially for um future um uh development and and the future, you know, working on sidewalks, these brick streets. Um, I understand. Um, I, but I have a fundamental policy difference and um and in the future, and I'm not sure why he vetoed one and not the other, because they both said the same thing. Um, so I plan to bring amendments forward in forty six eighty seven and forty six eighty six uh within the next two council uh meetings, um to to add some language and to make an amendment. So um, I just want to state my position on um the the correspondence that we received and and uh this was correspondence that was sent to me. Um, and I wasn't at the last meeting and I thought it was sent to the clerk's office and it wasn't. So um, it was only sent to myself and to um the city planner. So um I just want to make sure these cases, we've talked about these cases before, but I think it's really just a policy um, you know, concern um on how we move forward. And I think collectively as a city, uh we can get some things done without having to put um uh certain restrictions in. So um, that's my opinion and um, but I am going to support the override.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other comments?
Yes, um, I concur with the Councilwoman Dyche. I think that there are some changes that need to be made. And I hope that those will be addressed when we do the amendments. So I am for repairing the streets. I am not for exclusion of the TIF district. So that's my comment.
Any other comments? Councilman Prespolinski?
Well, I I will say one thing is that or it is at this juncture in time that something needs to be established. Because it's been over thirty years that that boat's been here and no money has been put aside for parks, for the plan, for the city plan, that's going to benefit the city. And maybe we need to have a round table about that. And because I think the elected officials, not the appointed officials, should be making these determinations on what's going on in our city and what's best. And the councilmen at that time and the department heads come in to hear our concerns, because we're always going to them. And you know what? That's not how it works. That's really not the way it works. We are the representatives of other people. And they need to listen to us because they're just appointees. Thank you. And thank you, Angie, for supporting it. And I'm sure we'll be able to work things out.
I, I have some.
Thank you.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Natta, want to vote, please?
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Ms. Dyche?
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jergis?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Definitely, aye.
And Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one.
Thank you. Ordinance passes. The veto override passes being in the ordinance passes without a signature. Thank you. Our fair business nomination, the council has the following appointment to the Michigan City Social Status African American males. Term expired February fifteenth, twenty twenty three, and are all one-year terms. Incoming vacant uh seat was from the Ministerial Association. Do we have a a letter from the Ministerial Association? Uh, moving on, we have comments from the public.
Kathy Stransky, two two three Sparker F. I just want to comment on a situation that I'm facing again with a landlord who's behind me who kicks the tenants out and throws off his stuff in the alleys. And it's as tall as his garage. It's as wide as his garage. There's raw food in there. There's anything you can think of, and he doesn't have it picked up. When I asked him last week, have you called the city? He said, I'm not. So I called the city and I have called them again to come and do something with this. I got raccoons, I got rats, I got all kinds of stuff crawling in my neighborhood. And I have a bloodhound. So it's really a challenge. And we need to do something about these landlords. If maybe we slapped them with a five hundred dollar fine because the neighbors see them putting this stuff out, and they can tape them, they can take pictures, whatever they got to do. And let's get these landlords. I am a landlord. I would never do that. I don't put stuff out. First of all, I don't kick anybody out, but that's beside the point. But we got to do something. Can the council put something together that they get fined? And work with vector control and all them people, because the the neighbors would step up, I promise you. We live with that. So I'm I'm hoping that um this week sometime, maybe that pile will disappear. But there is true food. Raw food, cooked food in that pile.
Yeah, Kathy, who did you call? Refuge Department or Vector Control or Street Department?
I called um, I called the street department, three, one, four. I I have to look.
Street Department. You called the street department?
Mm-hmm.
Who'd you talk to? Probably a clerk?
It was a woman. I don't, I don't remember.
Aye.
It's not my pickup. It's but it's it's pathetic. And if we could get an ordinance of some type or penalty some way, because that's ridiculous. And it happens. Angie's got it in her own area. It's ridiculous. So, thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
Brian Gross, eight thirty West Sixth Street. Um, just have a comment on the park department's master plan. They said they did that, I think, in twenty fifteen. You know, I'm familiar, I'm from the corporate world, not from um politics and stuff, but typically corporate world do a five-year plan and they review it every year. You know, uh, has the park department reviewed this plan since then? Made it, you know? Or is it just, they looked at it in twenty fifteen, they haven't changed a thing since then. I can tell you a lot has changed since twenty fifteen. And hopefully they look at it annually and get the pub- public involved annually, not just eight years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Uh, Tommy Kalavich thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, and I want to give a couple of public service announcements. It's that time of year again. As pursuant to section fifty four dash two thirty one of the Michigan City Municipal Code, I am going to read the dates and the times that all the fireworks are are to be permitted in the city. And that would be from June twenty ninth to July thirty third to to ju- ju- June twenty ninth to July third, from the hours of five P M to sunset. Then on the fourth of July, from ten A M to midnight. And then again, from July fifth to July night from uh five P M to uh sunset. Real simple, that's by state law. Um, so I already mentioned about the Pullman Standard part. It was uh uh June twelfth, nineteen seventy three. It was fifty year anniversary, you know? Uh, uh, our next conference, we always got to meet on the first person, third Tuesday of the month. We got to meet Wednesday next month, June nineteenth. That's a holiday. You know, we're the, we're the city council. We're not the county council or the county commission. So we, very special holiday that we've established for Juneteenth. Uh, finally, um I want to congratulate all the graduate, our graduation day Sunday, Michigan City High School. Want to congratulate, there's my Mariana. She's got her two medals. You you get to wear two medals if you have an academic and a technical uh accomplishment. She's a obviously one of the top students in her class, you know, and she got her technical, she uh got her CNA certification from A K Smith just a couple of weeks ago. So I want to just congratulate, I think we had three hundred and eighteen graduates. I think we had seven, Dr. Eastlock, who said there were seventy nine that graduated from Adoda. So we want to congratulate all of all those. So this, thank you and uh happy Juneteenth.
Good time. Thank you, Mr. Kalavich. Comments from the public?
Thanks for protesting too. Appreciate that. Uh, Rodney McQuarrie, six seventeen Union Street. Um, I was at the board of works meeting and we was talking about how refuge department vehicles are in bad shape. Are, um, we don't have the qualified technicians to take care of those vehicles. They go out of town and they stay out of town. And then when they come back, they just want to get rid of them. Um, of course, I was shut down at the board of works meeting. You was there, Don. Uh, Tommy was there. Um, it seems as though um getting close to election time again, if you get up and make comments about leadership, you get shut down. It's sad. Um I don't know where we headed to. I don't know what's going on. I hope that we do have new leadership in Michigan City come November. Um enough is enough. I didn't try to take a swipe at you about Washington Park. I, I really don't go out there that much. I really don't care about Washington Park that much as far as what you're trying to get done out there. But I do care about the playgrounds that's in the neighborhood where my kids still play. Um, some of them like to go down there. They just go down there and just hang out. You got some kids smoke marijuana. Some kids pushing over porta potties because there's nothing to do. We got playgrounds, our, the course that we play on is unforgiving. Cracks, run uphill, downhill, break your ankle. Um I I don't understand why we have to still have these old steel backboards where Gardena has glass backboards. It just seemed like it's a problem when it comes to black and white. I'm tired of it. I don't care about this multi-color flag stuff. I only care about one flag in America. And that's the red, white, and blue flag. We are all citizens. And it's time to treat us as citizens. And for those who are viewing public, do don't come to these city council meetings. You need to take time out and come and see what's really going on in these meetings. Um, this is where you bring your grievance or your concerns or to be able to address the issues that's going on in our community. We have people that's running for office right now. They won't even they're not even, they either not here, some of them come here and sleep in front row. They 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 don't even do nothing. They won't even get up and speak at this mic. So if you give them an opportunity and put them on the, and and vote them in, what do you think they're going to do? Are they going to speak into the mic? They cannot continue to push a separate agenda that everybody do not want to have. Pay attention, pay attention, um, citizens of Michigan City. Quit voting straight party tickets. Start voting for the individual and we'll do a lot better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Any other comments from the public? Comments from the council? Councilman Dyche?
Um, just to uh to piggyback off of um Tommy Kalavich, congratulations to all of the graduates. Um, again, we had several um graduates graduating with highest distinction and and I know that he's proud of of one of his, one of his kids, but um there is a a long list of of kids. And this is talks about, you know, my 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 youngest daughter graduated from Michigan City High School. And we have good kids that uh are going to do great things and we really want them to be back here in Michigan City. Um, I I am so proud of the the graduates, but I'm also proud that of the fact that we are now recruiting some of these graduates to be here in Michigan City, working at the police department, working at the fire department and all those things. So um, I know it's, it's a long night. I'm not going to name all of them because we've been giving them kudos. But I I do want to share that. I also want to give a shout out to um all of these individual groups that are trying to work with young people this summer um to try to keep them off the streets. We know we have a gun violence problem. Um, thank you for everybody who submitted um some solutions. And I know that um we have a few meetings coming up. But um we know we have a gun violence problem and um it's not an easy solution. And I believe that uh we have to figure out how to deal with our younger people at a younger age. Um, and so the more opportunities we have for them, the better. So um I'm working with a couple of folks that I'm trying to pull together for a youth summit, because we need to to make it fun. I'm working with a couple of folks that I'm trying to pull together for a youth summit, because we need to to make it fun, these things fun. Um, and not just, um, and and as stated tonight, um, I know they're working on the water tower park, we spent a lot of time there when I was growing up. Um, but again, how do we, how do we get kids back at the parks and have programs at the parks is gonna be important? Cause it's it's one thing to to fix a park, but it's another thing to have programs at a park. And uh, and that's that's gonna be the key, how do we get them to the park? To to participate, and we always had teachers that were in the summer that worked at all the neighborhood centers. I played for the King Center one year, I played for Eastport one year, and we just don't have that program anymore, and um and so that's gonna be important as well. Juneteenth, um, we talked about Pride, um, um, Councilman Privilinski, but Juneteenth is gonna be at Washington Park on the night, on the eighteenth and the nineteenth, there are gonna be events, family events on both days. And um so, again, um, just, you know, plan accordingly, come out to the park, bring your families. Um, there'll be many of us out there both days. And then lastly, I would like to make a comment, and and I'm thankful for, uh, I didn't see the resolution that Councilman Paul had on the agenda, but the Memorial Day celebration, um, not celebration, but memorial, I'll call it celebration, it was a memorial, and I learned so many different things, and you know, my grandfather is buried in the World War Two circle um there. And I learned some interesting historical facts that I need to investigate now about some of the first casualties of the Vietnam War from Michigan City that I don't think people realize, we talk about Naomi Anderson, but there are some some people um, that made a difference, uh, and and were smart and and lost their lives very early that um were drafted, and um we need to figure out a way to recognize them, and how do we encourage our Veterans Commission to take on the task of Veterans Day and Memorial Day? We have a commission for a reason, and I think that's a good opportunity for them to step up for our Veterans Day so that we don't have five people attend the parade in November. Uh, and as they stated at the Memorial Day's uh ceremony, the crowd is getting thinner and thinner every single year for for that event. And so I I think we should encourage our commission um, to to um support some type of event and start planning it now. So um again, love to see you at Juneteenth, and um, and uh I think that's all I have, thank you.
Yeah, a couple of things, uh, as Councilwoman Dyche was talking about, the Memorial Day Parade, I attended it, I saw her there at Greenwood Cemetery, and the program uh that was presented was presented by uh Miller Post American Legion Thirty Seven, they did a fantastic job. The other uh Armed Forces Services that were there was Squad Post Four Fifty One, the D A V Danny Bruce uh Twenty Three, and V F W Post Twenty Five Thirty Six. Uh, very heartwarming, very great, I mean, for the community, and yeah, the crowds are getting smaller, I've been going to this celebration, I don't know, thirty some years, we try to make it every year. Uh, kids can't go anymore cause they're out of town, but Jenny and I still love to go to it. Uh, it means a lot on Memorial Day, what we're doing there is we're celebrating, not celebrating, but thanking the people that have died for our freedom, for us to live in the United States of America. Whether you like it or not, whether whatever the politics may be, to live a free and a free nation. So I wanna thank those organizations for that, wanna thank all the, but everybody from the public that came out. And also wanna thank the cemetery workers for getting the cemetery in good shape and looked very nice, so wanna give them a shout out. And the Saturday night, it was Brew at the Zoo uh organized by the Washington Park Zoological Society, along with Johnny Stimley and uh some volunteers, uh, and the zoo director, Jamie Hoss, and I'm gonna encourage everybody to take a walk to the zoo this year, pay your five dollars or ten dollars, whatever it takes to get in there, just see what a remarkable job uh and what's going on at the zoo, it's it's, it's really nice, this new big cat exhibition they have now is really outstanding. They've done a lot of work with the walkways to make it more mobile for people to get around, and uh it's really, it's really a nice feature, and you gotta realize that our zoo, for a city our size of thirty two thousand people, there's only five cities in the state of Indiana that have zoos. And you know, it's like Indianapolis, Fort Wayne, Evansville, South Bend, I believe, Michigan City. So to me, that's a great attraction, and I would really encourage everybody to uh go there, and also wanna thank uh, park board member Tim Bidden and his wife Kathy for coming out and volunteering uh Saturday night at that, and I think I had no, that's it, that's all I got tonight, so I just wanna thank everybody for coming out to the zoo, let them raise some money, and for the Memorial Day celebration here in Michigan City, thank you.
Councilman, Councilman Presley?
Yes, uh, I I see that uh Nancy Mulnauer is in the audience, and I got a question uh for her from the sta- this thing, uh, sustainability uh committee. Uh, Nancy, uh, could you tell me what's going on with them uh car, the E chargers in the uh parking lot downtown, I heard that they weren't hooked up and that the redevelopment commission was supposed to pay for them, and what's, what the heck's going on here?
Nancy Mulnauer, one oh seven K Lane, Michigan City, um, I did send the email out after the last um council meeting here, and the vendor has been identified. So the mayor, the redevelopment commission, the planning department, and the controller are all aware of the third party vendor that has already been used in the past. So they need to look at that, decide if they wanna continue with that vendor, or decide to use someone else. But the vendor that was identified is one that's commonly used by a lot of um people that have those electric vehicle chargers that you're able to put in your debit of your credit card to get the charge. So they're installed, they're connected, the only thing that's missing is the payment mechanism, that's all. So I've done what I can do, what I promised to do, I completed the task and received the answer on that.
So is it depending on the board of works now to choose a vendor, is that what this is?
I'm not sure what the process is. And Councilman Dyche, will you follow up on that?
Yeah, I'll follow up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Nancy.
We're close, sir.
It was already approved at Board of Works? Oh, okay.
So it's taken care of? Thank you, Gil.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I I uh I think, I wanna thank uh Bruce for that comment about, you you are correct, I didn't wanna get in a big debate about that two thousand fifteen master plan. But that that is correct, it should be looked at and see what what else is going on, but but see the, but the real mystery is this, is that I I had, I I had a, I couldn't get no information, so I had to file a Freedom of Information Act request to get this information from the park board on what's going on with the designation of Federer's Alley. And it was never voted on to take it away. So it still should be reserved for Michigan City residents only. And I I think that here's what I really wanna say, is I think that in this whole operation of forming this park and having whatever the cost is, two million, three million, but I heard that number flopped around four point three millions, okay, so we'll get the accurate figure, okay? But I don't know who to file it with, because the A R P committee is an ad hoc committee, so I don't even know if they'll answer uh uh A uh Freedom of Information Request. That's kind of a tricky situation, isn't it, to get the truth? By a committee that's operating in the dark, and that's what it's doing. No agenda, no nothing, no minutes. So, you know, this this to me is I don't wanna be told that I should have showed up and said this, or how and how can I show up when you don't even have a posted agenda? That's all garbage, and I, and here's what, the master plan for the parks is, please don't tell me that uh, there's a councilman in each ward, and they should be doing this and they should be doing that, what the heck is the park board doing? All they've been doing is ignoring everything all these years, everything. That there should be no discussion about these crappy parks, and I'm not gonna, you know, let me say this, is that there's no way that Marsh School Park should look the way it does. Cause when we gave that additional land to the school to add on, they were supposed to maintain that as a public park, a reciprocating agreement. You know, thi- this is just ridiculous what's going on. Why isn't the park system, and I guess what really gets me, I don't have a problem with doing things for special people. I really don't. But what about everyone in general, and the people that can go to a neighborhood park, and and not just enjoy their neighborhood and their neighbors, and do something like you said, Councilman Pris Valinsky, you have one chair down at Gardena's, or one swing down at Gardena Park for people with any kind of handicaps or specialized to to participate, why aren't there more? Why, if this is what we wanna do, why aren't we carrying this through the whole city in everything we do? I I just, I think that that's a heck of a lot of money to put in one place, and then what what's going on? What about the rest of the parks, it's it's really, it it's not right. Just plain and simple, it's not right, and the park department, I think personally with wanting to cover it up and discuss it as the master plan, and we did this in the master plan, well, you know what, I guess I'll go ask for that master plan and see exactly what they did ask for. And I'm gonna see what they asked for at Ames Field and at Marsh School, and every other park in Michigan City, and see if they've even got to that point. Cause it shouldn't, they're supposed to be implementing it and asking us for the money to implement it. So I take exceptions to your remarks tonight, Councilman Pris Valinsky, and on a note about Kathy's problem, I did call the sanitary district, I called them twice and never got a call back yet from, um, I think that Steve down there is taking Mike's place this week. But the fact of the matter is, is is what Kathy's talking about, is what all these all of these landlords, and I'm calling what they, what it is, the crappy landlords are doing this and throwing their garbage out, and we do have ordinance that when you put that kind of stuff out, you should be getting a dumpster, and the point is, is that how many citations have been written like that? I I I wanna know how many citations are written on the complaints. I wanna know if the sanitary district is working with the planning department to write the citations. That that's the real question here, to see if there's follow through and follow up, because I went over there to see that mess, and that is, I couldn't believe what was going on over there, and the landlord was there right there, and I wanna find out how many crappy, just low scale units he owns. Yeah, let let's figure out that first. We're gonna, we're gonna take care of it, Kathy. Oh, I didn't wanna say that, okay?
While I'm here behind our stadium.
Thank you. And just just for the record, it's not just landlords that are leaving stuff out in front of, in front of properties, so don't, don't start pointing fingers at one specific thing, so. Councilwoman Jigga's?
Yes, so back to all the festivals. Back to all the festivals we talked about, you know, we're gonna have Pride Fest and Juneteenth for two days. But also this weekend is Singing Sands Festival, nobody mentioned that, so we have a three day festival, it's like world class sand sculptures, please come take a look at it and check it out. There's a little bit of information on our website, but um you know, check it out, it's it's really a great festival, I went last year, and I plan to show up this year, thanks.
Yeah. Well, I I'm sorry, and and just, and I know, I know, I know that Councilperson Pris Valinsky too, and and I have several pictures too of dumps, well, dumping grounds. And let me say this, um, you know, we we talk about the street department, we talk about all the different groups, and the refuse department is out there rain, sleet or snow every day, and they're taking off their routes to to go pick up this trash. We're calling and we're saying, you know, we can't get a hold, well, you know, they're down vehicles too, and shorthanded, short staffed, people are leaving, and so I, you know, I I don't wanna point fingers at them, but we do, we should be having, we should have complaints, and we should have um some fees and some different things that are being charged, because um if you go to any of our neighboring cities, we are missing out on a lot of revenue from these bad actors. And that is one thing that we need to make sure of, is that we figure out a way, you know, and 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 I'll, and I'll say this, cause um I love Mr. Kinsel um when he was here, and um I have all those pictures, and he um but he always talked about a clean city, so he wanted us to give everything, do everything for free. Everything is not free, these garbage trucks are a million dollars, and we need to start charging for services. You can't go anywhere in Chicagoland or our neighboring neighboring communities and have these pictures that were taken around the city. I had to pay for a dumpster, I used to be a landlord, I paid for dumpsters. And we need to make sure that we find them more than the cost of a dumpster, as Councilwoman Jigga said on our break, because it's we should be able to cover our cost of these vehicles just from revenue from that. You know, we do spring cleanup, outside of spring cleanup and fall cleanup, they should be charged, and I mean, that's the way I feel about it, because we have allowed this for so long that people feel like it's it's their right to have all these services for free, and it's not free. We gotta pay our employees, we gotta maintain the vehicles, and we gotta buy new vehicles, and so these bad actors need to be fined, and um, I have pictures, and I I'm gonna submit them to the mayor's office, to the to the refuse department or sanitary district, which is a whole nother thing, and then um get it to uh the street department, somebody should be able to go pick that stuff up. But in my opinion, we hire somebody to do it and bill them. Just bill them, bill bill whoever owns the property, and start sending them a bill and attach it to the property. And then, and then we'll we'll get it, so, just my opinion.
Councilman President?
Yeah, I have, uh, cause I have to comment about this refuse uh issue, being the liaison to the sanitary district and going through, so like we all did, with this garbage truck issue. Now let's take a step back, we didn't have the A R P money, right, and they came to us and they needed Now let's take a step back, we didn't have the ARP money, right, and they came to us and they needed what, four? How many trucks did they need? Two, two million dollars, right? Where were we gonna get that, where were we gonna be at to pay for this? That's why there needs to be a fee associated with these huge pickups. And that task was assigned to the sanitary district back in January and waiting for a resolution on how much they're gonna start charging. Whoever, they can charge Don Pris Valinsky to come over and pick up a huge load, I don't care. Uh, you know, other cities, like Councilwoman Dyke said, other cities do it, South Bend's been doing it for years. And it's just a convenience that people take advantage, they take advantage of the city. We wanna be good neighbors, but we're running a business here, and when you got a million-dollar garbage truck, if you don't have the money to pay for it, then what are you gonna do then? And so it's just all basic economics of running a business, and I do have to say, I don't know what the issue is. I don't know what the issue is, and it's not my job to go around and manage people or departments, I call in my concerns and try to get them picked up. But I know for a fact, there's been a pile of debris sitting on the corner of Williams and Pine Street, thirteen sixteen Pine Street, that's been sitting there for two and a half weeks, and I called. Last week I called, I called Monday, said it would have been picked up by five o'clock Monday evening, and it was still sitting there today. Now, whatever the circumstances are, I don't know. But if you're telling me you're gonna pick something up, then come and get it picked up, okay? And I don't know, something's gotta change, because I see piles laying all over the city, and and if that's the the reputation that the administration wants the city to have, well, then that's their prerogative. That is not Councilman Don Pris Valinsky's perception of what I want Michigan City to look at. When I go out of town, when I go to Fishers, when I go to this nice city, when I go to Valpo, you don't see what you see here. You go up into Franklin Street, you see debris on South Franklin Street, on the sidewalks, there's trash laying all over the sidewalks. But if that's unacceptable to the administration, I'm sorry, but it's not acceptable to me. And I would wish that maybe the administration can send an email out to the city council members so they can tell their constituents, when their constituents call, why their garbage in the refuse isn't getting picked up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And no more comments from the council. Fair enough to adjourn?
Most freely adjourned.